Good evening. Good to see so many out. Well, we're starting a little late. Had a little bit of paperwork to copy and et cetera. So I think I'll call the meeting to order and note the open meeting law preparation and we'll send it to the meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ready, darling?
Yeah.
So, and I'll also have to lay it down. Call roll with James.
Here.
Larry.
Here.
Bob.
Here.
Head up.
Yes.
Find my agenda here. I'll step on top of it. Right on top of your new pile. Okay. First on the agenda, approval of the March 1st regular council minutes. So those were in your meeting or in your packets that came out last week. So I hope you've had time to read those and you can quiz right on through here with, I do some suggestions for amendment for approval. So could I have it?
I bring my minutes. I make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Thank you. Motion by Isla.
I'll second.
Second by James to approve the minutes of the March 1st meeting. And we'll start with Larry.
Yeah.
Isla.
Yes.
Bob.
Yes.
And James.
Yes.
You have a list of the claims. And the financials that were sent to you last week were the group that Eddie sets up as for the council meeting. And it is the fiscal year as they were closed and sent to the auditor. So if you have any questions about that or any questions about the claims, we'll entertain those at this point.
How you doing?
Okay.
Landmark Survey and EDM Associates.
Yes.
What are those?
Those are for the finishing up of the sewer, storm sewer project on the north side of the wall.
When did we talk about that?
We talked about it once some time ago, but doesn't matter. What, I mean, what's the question?
We, we've had meetings here that, and then here we go again, that you're hiring people without the board of directors.
We hired Ron Noor some two or three years ago.
So he's just on a repeater then?
This is in detail and this was, I asked Ron to come in again at the end of it because the two things that we looked at when we hired him was the north side control of water.
Okay.
And one of them is behind Jared Stephens. The other one is at the north side of the Wall Street.
Was that all one?
So I asked him to finish that up. He told us at the time of the first hire thing, we all understood that Landmark would be involved in that. They were not on the board yet.
Okay.
And so that's, that's all.
All part of that.
And, and yes, and the infrastructure funds from the lost account, there's enough money there to pay for all this. That's what it is, is finishing up of the infrastructure that was started with the storm sewer. There's two inlets that are sitting out under that fence that can't get water in them because they're silted over.
Okay.
And they need to be cleaned out. And then we're trying to get some underground pipe to bring it into that.
Okay. Do we, do we own that property right there on the north side?
There's an easement through there.
How many feet?
Fifteen, I guess. Ten, is it ten on each side of the pole? Is that what we said?
Fifty-five.
Ten on each side of the poles. And the, the power company's already been through there. It also needs the trees cleaned out because they're not supposed to be trees in the easement. I don't know who have decided.
So we're not, that property to the north of that is Willie Tramp or Lani, whoever owns the downsides, correct?
Yes. Dave Trapp farms it. And he's set to meet with us to finish that up where, so that he knows where it is.
And we're gonna run that, which direction, to the, to the west or to the east?
No, it comes, it just goes through the backside of two houses, Anne's and, what's her name?
Marla.
Marla. And comes right up to the edge of the third piece, the third property. And it will dump into that first inlet into the storm sewer, which is right, almost directly middle of the, the apartment building.
So we're not starting from where Margaret Arns was and doing that in a stretch?
No, no. We can't because there's a high place right there that...
I, I realize that.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't starting from the east end and making the whole thing.
No, you can't because it goes both ways.
What's this?
We do need to clean out the trees, so like I said, that way through.
What's this landmark survey? That ain't the same as Ron Noor's, is it?
Landmark survey is survey and he pages surveys for Ron. Ron is the designer, is the engineer.
And who is EDM then? Ron?
Yeah, that's Ron.
Well, I see in this thing here that there was a survey for the swimming pool, is that correct? On my, one of my sheets here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It showed, it showed that there was some surveying going on here by the swimming pool.
Is that in the packet there?
Am I wrong or right?
Yeah.
There's, does one, the packet there of the, of the swimming pool stuff is, is Karen's presentation that she wanted us to copy. Okay, but that, what's on the, what's on the claims that you're saying?
I think it's 243 from JEO, 24375. Yeah, I didn't read that. It seems like they want to know where for us.
Well, we, whatever is on there from JEO is already approved. You approved.
Yeah, I'm just curious what it might be.
Yeah, you approved that with them, with them as the engineers want to go. So we have not reached that however many thousands of dollars that they have given us. So this is just, we've made several payments.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the finances.
Okay. Root by James to approve the plans and financials or whatever. While I'm here on this subject, the auditors will be here next Monday.
The auditors?
This is what they've got, what they got, along with everything else we've sent them and then they'll do the in-house.
So they are coming?
Yeah, they are coming.
Okay.
Got a note from them today.
Okay, I talked to them a couple of weeks. They weren't sure until they told them how they were gonna handle that, so.
They had, the, one of the gals in the office I talked to last week said that they were talking about not coming out and then decided yeah, so.
I got one question before we second it. Tyler Insurance got $175 half or by seller. So was $175 total or was another $175 at the seller's?
$175 total. That's what you refused to pay last time. Both Mr. Noor and...
So Hudson's paying some?
Both Mr. Noor and Mr. Hudson have been in and paid their half.
Of half of $175?
Yes. And they paid the stamp tax and we paid the recording fees and that's all now.
I might have jumped in. What is Corvane?
It's a provider of...
Yeah, that's Water Reeds.
Water Reeds. Water Reeds.
Water Reeds.
We've been replaced with quite a few.
Going through town.
Oh, yeah, we got left and gone and paid.
Depends on when they go, but a lot, most of them are old.
Yeah.
And the newer ones cost more, but they have, I guess, don't they? Probably, everything else does. And they're a little different. So I think the idea is they'll last longer, is that right, Larry? Did you tell them that?
Twenty years.
Huh?
Twenty years.
Twenty, they should last about 20 years or so. We put some new ones out at the school. We put new ones in different houses. I don't know any other big projects like the school. There were several one out there. What we're trying to do is watch and we read those all over time and those fluctuate a lot or we lose money because from what the guys tell me is when a meter goes bad, it under reads.
True.
Doesn't over read. So we lose money every time we have a bad meter.
I'll second it.
Okay. Second by Larry. And the vote then with, with Isla?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
And you. Okay, Doug, you're up.
So we're here to talk about the dam race. One of the topics for me tonight is the, the street closure for the dam race July 25th. I'm on the committee there helping them out and I'm just gonna be here to talk about another street closure. So what I'm here, I'm doing the dam race, making sure you guys are aware of that. It'll be from 5:00 AM to 5:00 PM, just like last year. Close the street in front of Waltz and that whole street earlier where they come into town and finish line and all that kind of stuff, so.
Cause pop and tape or 1.1 right all the way through?
Yeah. So we close the street from there because that's where they have their finish line and all that kind of stuff. So I just wanna make sure the city council was aware of that and whatever wheels had to turn to make sure that was approved and stuff like that, so. That's topic number one.
Is that all of the street closures?
No, there's one other one also. So the, the second one would be for the, five years ago, I held the hay tool collectors convention here in town that's coming back again this summer, June 3rd, 4th and 5th. So we'll close the street again in front of the hay market and the museum like we did last time, put up a tent, barricade the area off. And that's where all the guys will spend their time setting up, displaying, swapping, doing whatever they do at these shows and stuff. We're also gonna apply for an SDL for that event and also for the dam race because that whole area gets barricaded a lot for people eating. They can have a drink outside the bar and that kind of stuff.
In the front?
Yeah, in front, yeah. Past couple of years, at least last year we might, but the year before we didn't have an SDL and they kept trying to take their drinks out to watch people come through the finish line. So we're gonna completely barricade the area off now, so if they wanna have a beer out there and watch everybody's come through the finish line, it'll be, we won't have to chase them down.
I think that's been done before as long as there's a barricade.
Yeah, no, we'll have, I bought all new barricades, steel barricades now. It won't be fencing, it'll be four foot high, eight foot long, steel barricades that all lock together for all the events around town now for the people are having and stuff, so. They brought the paperwork for the SDLs to give you to fill out and sign up. There's a sheet here also, you can kinda see the layout for the hay show and there's some notes here. We're gonna close the street on the 2nd of June, that's when the tent goes up for the hay show at 7:30. The tent is about 50 by 100, that whole area. We'll call for locates. We'll stake the tent down like we did last time. And then when the tent goes up, I go through and fill all the holes where the states were glad to did last time. Larry and I talked about that last time and it worked out fine. Barricades will surround the whole area. We'll remove the tent Sunday morning, first thing, June 6th. And then there'll be lights in the tent throughout the night, just kinda for security and so people aren't messing around in there and that kind of stuff, so. Pretty straightforward, simple things like this. So we notified the businesses for the hay show. Last time I had to notify businesses and bring signed papers, so I did bring those. They haven't done that for the dam race. Maybe there's different rules now than there was five years ago, I don't know, but Main Street, Treasures is aware that we're closed for the hay show, the Journal, and I even had Waltz sign something. It really doesn't affect them because we're, the street is still open to Waltz. And Bratson's closed, he, he said it didn't matter to him or whatever, so.
So that it doesn't affect anybody?
No, well...
Main Street?
Main Street. But the street is still open to Main Street.
Sure.
It affects the Journal more than anything, but Nancy knows about it and she didn't have an issue with it at all, so. But I did notify them, they did sign a piece of paper if you want those.
Okay.
Other than that, that's all I need, so.
Okay. So June 2nd to June 6th?
Yeah, that's for the hay show.
And, and the dam race is what date?
Uh, I think it's July 25th. Let me make sure of that.
Just one day?
It's one day, yes.
Okay.
We start at 5:00 in the morning and we call...
July 31st.
There we go, thanks, 31st.
31st?
31st, yeah.
So let's just put that in motion if, you know, so I would entertain a motion to approve the closing of those streets on July 31st all day and from June 2nd through June 6th AM.
I'll approve that motion.
You'll make that motion?
I'll make that motion. Sorry.
I'll second that.
James makes the motion. Just need to have the notes in there, so. And then Isla's the second. And we'll start Bob.
Yes.
And James.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So here's, I'll get her the forms for the SDLs.
Yeah, and check with us on that because I think you have to apply for it and then we have to...
No, you have to sign this that they need faxed in then. Because we're not, it's because we're a license holder?
I know that, but I don't think we sign it until the board approves it. Do we have to have the one back from the state before we approve it? Has been the past. I know there's some new regs, so.
That's what those I says now, when you sign that, then you scan it and you send it to them.
Okay.
That's all they do now.
Okay, okay. I know they made some changes about how to do that.
If it's a non-proper, then it actually go the other way, but when you're a license holder, now it just, when you guys sign it, you scan it and then...
Well, they did some other stuff about, don't even have to go through the board. I have to read that too, because like the state, I talked with them just short of Walgo and they said it made several changes.
Yeah, just call them when they're ready, they won't scan it, it is a long story. Thank you.
Okay. So the next thing is a simple thing. You have an example, I think, in your packet of a deposit slip. There's some comparative costs there that we looked into if we wanna duplicate. One of the cheaper ones we can get is 11 cents each for each slip. I, you know, I think this is a great thing. There's no confusion on, on the number of the bank account. And we've checked with the bank in this particular one, although it's not coming through the bank, it's one that they approved, they can read and so forth, we've checked the accounts up there. So unless anybody's got a comment about that, we just need that approved, that we are, can order those deposit slips. Keep in mind that most bank accounts, you pay for checks and deposit slips and service charges and so forth, so this is, we buy our checks and vault, we buy our deposit slips and we'll be conservative, we won't put one name on each deposit slip. Motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Second.
I'll second.
I'll second since. And... Dr. James?
Yep. Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
And Bob?
Yes.
Okay. Two years ago, we have, what's the guy's name, guys? On the roof?
Jim Casey.
Jim Casey, who is a known rooper for this type of roof, would you say? Pretty well-known round. I came in and gave us an estimate of 8,000 something a break. If that's it, if you're packing. He is... Yeah, there it is. Oh, this is the new one, isn't it? He was laying it for them. He, when he was here the other day, he said, "I can tell you if we lost some 10 grand." And that's why, so, so he did get it to us today. So 9,165, so he is under the 10 grand as promised. They would put adhesive and then a spray of the rough stuff on top to, keeps the damage off, keeps the sun off, makes it last another length of time. If we don't do the protective coating and the sun gets through and the rubber underneath starts to break up, then we're looking at a new roof and whatever, 25, 30,000?
50.
50,000?
Between 50 and 60.
So we need to take care of it before it starts leaking and before whatever. I'm sure that it's gonna go up again at another whatever time frame, but we need to approve his estimate for him to get done, get going. And I think he was thinking about he can get to it before too long. He's trying to get his schedule set up. So any comments or whatever there above him?
And this is just an overlay, just a spray overlay?
It's, yeah, they put, it's an adhesive and then they put a spray overlay and so forth. They patch and see, we, because of the new air conditioning and stuff unit, we've got vents up there that we don't need anymore, so they'll remove, remove those and do the proper hole patching and covering. And there's some places where there's stuff coming loose a little bit around some of the vents and some of the edges and they'll patch, they'll work, they'll fix all that.
So two years ago, he came in, recommended we do it that point in time or he said we were marginal?
It was ready then, it's really ready now. It's like, it's gonna start. There's a lot of the gravelly stuff that's gone, so we got bare patches. We were just trying to hold off as long as we could to try to... So we don't have any leaks yet. They said they found a little bit of water gathering around like the vents and some of the edges and stuff that could be, when they start pooling, you know?
I know there's a local contractor that's doing this also. Can we get another bid?
Who's the other local?
Red Arms is doing this also.
Okay. I don't care what you're calling. It's a different process. It's not just a roofing job.
No, no, it's, he's doing something similar to that. I'd just like to have a second opinion before we approve or undo it.
You wanna wait another month to get on the schedule? Or do you wanna put some kind of stipulation in it to talk to Brad, get an opinion from Brad?
We can get a, we can get a bid and then, you know, way out of whack and then, you know, I would have no problem going forward with this one, but I'd like to see a second opinion.
Okay.
It was two years ago, I don't know, another month, I...
Well, he does, yeah. You know, he's just trying to get the schedule because he's full.
Sure, sure. I understand.
I'll contact Brad by the end of the week and see if he's interested.
Okay.
And then have him provide it. Hope, we need a date, because otherwise we don't give a date, he's really busy.
He's not gonna...
Well, that's what I'm thinking, because he never has time for anything.
Right, I mean, do we, if he wants to do it, we want his bid by what date, what we wanna have him?
By this time next week? Does that work? And we can get up there? He's in town?
So then we're gonna, tentatively, if he's not interested and doesn't get back to us by next week, Monday, then where you will go ahead with this, is that what they're planning?
I don't know. Whatever you wanna do.
Larry?
If you don't wanna, if you...
You good with that?
If you wait until another month, you know, and...
No, we didn't.
And he's filled up, then we may not get it right with Lake Paul. And then the damage is done underneath.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that if Brad can't get it to us by the end of next week, we go ahead with this.
Okay, motion?
How, how long is these hand stuff supposed to last? What he's gonna put on there?
Do you guys remember?
It should go on for like over 10 years.
That's what I thought.
Does he have, I mean, does he have a written guarantee or anything that we go from or just word of mouth? You know, he might pass away and then who do we go from there? We gotta ask him.
I don't, I, do, I don't know if anybody guarantees roofs other than what they should last.
It should last 10 years under normal conditions, but they're getting the old...
And if they're abnormal, we've got insurance.
They have hail ready, they have insurance.
Sure, that's what insurance is for.
They have storms, they have all that life, just like any other roof. But under, under normal conditions, it should extend, at least 10 years.
You better check with Brad, see if he can even, I don't think he would do it.
So the motion is to approve if Brad...
That's the idea.
So, so the motion is to approve if Brad is not onto it by the end of next week, if that Brad...
He's gotta give us a bid. He's gotta give us a bid and a commitment.
By the night, by the end?
He's gotta give us a bid by next, and a commitment. I don't wanna, I don't wanna, if we can get to it, it'll be a commitment. It'll be done by this day. We're gonna have to put a deadline when we want it done though, too. Yeah. Just like Casey's, I mean, they gotta give us a kind of a date when they're gonna be done.
So you want a date he can have done?
I want, I want both. I want a commitment from him that he would give us a bid and a date and he will have it done by now.
Okay, so we want a bid and a date?
Same with Casey's. I want an idea when they say...
Okay, a bid and a commitment, yeah. Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
So we really, we don't know when Casey's will have this formally done either until they, we approve them to do it.
Could we call them, find out what they're, what they're looking at? Could we follow up with them soon? Can I just table it till next month? We should have it by then?
We're second guessing.
Jim's got two big jobs coming up and he can start being made and he's in a great job. He would like to get this in before that.
Okay.
So I would say that if we can get a bid and a commitment, we can get back to Jim before and he can be in before May.
Okay, and, and that's...
Is that satisfactory?
I want Brad to commit by the end of May and two.
Not by the end of May. We want him by the end of the week, because we're not gonna...
No, I want a bid from him and a commitment that if he gives the bid, he'll have it done by the end of May.
That he'll finish the job by the end of May?
Well, yes.
Okay.
And you want, and I'll have that by a week or the day?
You know, guys, so this is putting a lot of pressure on, on roopers, because if you set in with a bunch of rain and hailstorms, it's not gonna happen. So we gotta keep that in mind.
I understand.
Yeah, okay.
But even if we approve it, nothing...
Okay, so that's James' motion and the second would be by?
I'll second.
Larry, and so we will have a vote of James?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Isla?
Yes.
And Bob?
Yes.
Okay. Finding and zoning, Mr. Chase?
I'm bringing my monthly report.
Okay.
Building permits.
Okay. You wanna take this?
I have additional questions that you may ask him.
You're gonna wanna do that, Larry, considering. Okay, here, here. You want this?
I... Yeah. Regarding building permits for month March. Steve Keeler at 105 East Harold driveway. Father James Kater, St. Rose for concrete parking sidewalk.[1745.52] Bryce Rossman, 501 West Sharon Street, concrete patio, approached a shed and a bed for basketball. Kelly Marshall, 1309 East Fourth Street, Crofton fence in the backyard, request denied. On easement issues, Justin Bossman, 614 West Iowa Street, Crofton enlarged and replaced existing driveway with concrete. So, those are the issues, the permits that have been issued, were denied.
My unit, I spoke here a few weeks ago on Kelly.
True.
It's been approved by the county, by Cedar County, and denied by the telephone company. I went and looked at his property, there's already a fence there. What, what happens when we have one approved and one denied?
Actually, there, in the instance that you're speaking of, there are no approvals.
Yep, they talked to us, they called Cedar Knox, and they approved it. They talked to them on the phone last week, they approved it.
They need to let me know that.
Okay.
It's not, not enough for you to know that, I'm sorry.
Okay, you can give them a call tomorrow, they approved it.
On what condition?
There wasn't any condition. As long as they have access to it. As long as they have access to it, that's fine, they were good with it.
You're talking about Cedar Knox Electric?
Yep.
That's not the information I have had over the history.
Good, can I, can I say something here?
Yeah.
The guy that signed off on that was not a regular man, and so there was an issue, and they discussed that. They've got a problem with, because the young man that came out didn't know where the properties and the easements and stuff was, apparently.
Part of it was my fault, too, because I didn't...
But I, after I spoke with you, I did call Cedar and he said, "No, we signed off on it, we have no problem."
Yeah, they did. And then Cory, Cory was up later and all of that. So, there, there is an issue there, but it, but it has been denied, so...
I know.
The, see?
Oh, I guess you denied it on...
Easement issue. That's according to regulations.
But as long as, if Cedar signs off on it...
They're not the only ones that sign up.
I understand, but that's my question, what happens when we have somebody that will sign up? Cedar Knox will sign up on it, what do we do with Great Plains?
In theory, they all need to sign.
If, if anyone...
The easement belongs to the utilities.
Okay.
We can follow that through, and I'd be glad to do so.
Yeah, I thought it was Cedar Knox and all that with Great Plains.
The process, once the permit is denied, moves toward a variance or some of that nature. Kelly has in his hand a denial.
That's another easement issue like we've got out there, so...
We faced that easement up...
On Sharon and...
On the, on Colorado, just a short time.
We need to get all the easements cleaned up so we don't have that issue. That's what needs that, I don't know whether, how we're going to do it.
I'll be with you, Mike, we'll figure it out.
I have some sympathy for Kelly.
Yeah, I do, too.
In, in the circumstance, but...
We'll be, we'll figure it out.
We, regulations are what they are, we either do them or don't.
Yep, I understand.
Any other questions, I'd be glad to work with them. A question may arise. I've had two requests regarding private water wells. And I think there's some history that I'm not acquainted with possibly on private water wells. If someone could elucidate my information, I would appreciate that. Back in 1995 through 1997, somewhere along in there, is there an ordinance? And I will try to look into that regarding that detail. I just thought maybe, since this issue had come up recently, I would ask if anyone was aware of a date to look, or a time period.
You say there's a different ordinance?
There may have.
May have been.
There may have been an ordinance of that nature, so well, okay.
So, if anybody can give, give Mike some information, it's welcome.
Just where to look, or, I know where to look in minutes, but what time period would be super?
Okay. The next on your agenda is the sewer report, and I think we just put this on here so that we could report to you exactly where we are, and that is that on the fifteenth, right? Fifteenth, yes. The fifteenth is the city hall type meeting when Miller and Associates will be here. They've asked for that to start at six, and we put it in the paper twice, and we'll do so again this week. And Brooke's been very accommodating to put an article on the front page a couple of times, even when we had to change it. And Irma, I appreciate you drawing that to our attention, too. We don't ever intend to interfere with. That's why, that's why we don't like the meetings on Wednesday night, because we don't want to interfere with church activities. So, that being... Yeah, that being Holy Week, that was, that was a bad timing, and it was just, we just picked the two dates that they hadn't, and I didn't even look at anything beyond that.
What was that time?
Six o'clock. I think they wanted to, they, he asked for six, and I just said yes. By the time they introduce each other, or themselves, and so forth, and get started, if you're, you know, running a little late, we will, what we will do is call a city council meeting so that everybody can be here without any problems with quorum and open meeting and so forth. And then I'll just turn it over to Miller's, and they'll have complete control of explaining what they're, what they've done, what the research is, the options that we have. They'll want input from the public, that's why they want to come out. But they'll run the meeting, and when they're done, we'll close it. So, there won't be any, there won't be any votes or anything else unless somebody comes up with something that they want to... That's on the fifteenth, it's a Thursday night, seems to be when they can get away. So, so that's, that's all there is on the sewer report, we'll term that up with them. Now, we have Aaron, who's going to talk to us about pool and economic development.
I don't think my voice is very loud, but...
You're welcome to the mic.
Thank you.
Do you want that?
Pace around a little bit.
Yep.
All right, I am Erin Phillips, and I am Crofton's Economic Development Director, and I am also the Pool Committee Chairman. I have come because our pool committee has met numerous times and to discuss the future of the Crofton Pool. One way to do this, we feel, is to open the current pool, and I just would like to see the council's discussion on that.
I would make a motion that we hire Miller Painting tomorrow. Get them over here, have them assess the pool. If they say it's safe to open, I make another motion that we open the pool either on... No, 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 you're not the only one. Trust me, you're not the only, well, you are, but you're not.
Because I know whenever I talk to them on the phone, they want to say, "For the pool, for the pool, for the pool."
Right.
And now, all of a sudden, the dipper came up a while back, half of them was going somewhere else.
Right.
And I couldn't understand that, because...
Okay.
Thank you. When it goes into the local foundation, my understanding is that when it goes to the local foundation, it automatically goes to the Nebraska Foundation, and then they control, you know, how it's invested and those kind of things. My understanding is, and those of you who know more than I do can correct me, but the five, the half a million that went into the unrestricted endowment, and I've always said that an unrestricted endowment is kind of an oxymoron, because the fact that it's an endowment restricts it. In other words, you never get that money out, the only thing you can use is the interest off of that endowment. And, and, and they also charge you to get it back out, so that four hundred thousand, that's guaranteed, will cost us eight thousand to get out, because they're going to charge a percentage of it.
Okay, I just, it's been bothering me, so...
Yeah, you can do that, that's great.
I'm going to call it.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So, I guess I'm coming to ask what the council's thoughts are. I know the community members that I've spoken to, and our committee definitely stand for refurbishing the pool.
That conversation right there, it can change.
Well, I don't, I don't know that it can change, I don't know that it can change.
I don't know they can change it.
I don't think it can change.
I don't think they can get it out of the foundation now, so...
Do they change the endowment?
Do we, do we, I'd like to make a motion that we break ground this fall on that at the same location, but I'm curious now...
Yeah, I don't think...
I don't think so. According to an account that, that the family wanted to go into the four hundred thousand dollars, and that can't be taken out.
But the four hundred thousand dollars is earmarked for a pool, and Ed, Ed was talked to by Emily with the foundation, and she, he gave his blessing to be able to use it for refurbishing, because the way it was raised...
It's, but it's directly, it's got to be school.
Yes, for sure. That five, that four hundred thousand is only for... No, no, that four hundred thousand is only for...
I think it's for the, yeah.
But the foundation money can be used for anything.
That's what I was, that's what I thought.
The foundation money can be used for anything.
And if I remember your report when you came in with John that day, there was a million dollars total, so five hundred thousand is in an unrestricted, or, yes, unrestricted endowment, four hundred thousand earmarked for the pool, or the reuse, and there's an extra hundred thousand there, and seven hundred and fifty thousand was in one fund and a hundred thou, or something, seven twenty-five thousand.
Seventy-five thousand is, is in...
We can apply for those for that use also, so there's a possibility.
We can talk to the foundation about that.
But we'd have to apply.
Yeah.
And that's also committed to apply, you don't apply to the state anymore. The state does not say how this is going to...
It would have to be the citizens here or somebody here applying to the local foundation, exactly.
Absolutely.
That's what I understood. So, then they make a decision whether they're going to allow it, and then they get, and the state releases it.
And every year forever on the five hundred thousand dollars, forever. So, Crofton is going to have ESMON every year forever on the five hundred thousand. So, that could help pay for part of the loan payment, or whatever.
How much is that, Irma? Is that one percent?
It's five hundred thousand.
I know, but what's the, what's the interest?
It's more than that.
Where is your, what we thought a year?
Four and a half, after two or three years.
Well, I thought we were discussing twenty-three-something thousand, it would be the interest pre on the five hundred thousand. And like Irma said, I don't want everybody to know this, because you mentioned it was controlled by the state, not controlled by the state, controlled locally by our foundation boards.
Gotcha.
So, we can take that twenty, thirty thousand a year, put it towards the pool, get a new slide, whatever we want to do, we have that authority to do that, plus other products around town. So, kind of what I'd like to see, especially that, that first year that, that interest you used on the pool, and the same, and the same refurbishment we own.
And thank you for clarifying that, but I think when I said controlled, I meant controlled as far as giving it back to us, so we have to apply. Somebody has to give it out of that kind of way.
Well, they'll kind of check.
Doesn't matter, it's a, it's a matter, it's a matter, so...
Yeah, I understand, you know...
Yeah, yeah.
It's going to be for...
Yes, it has to go to the local foundation to apply and get your, whatever, yeah, so, okay, that's good, I'm glad you clarified that.
The bottom line is, is before you talk about refurb, refurbishing a pool, you got to make sure it's even worth refurbishing in the spot it's in.
So, see, we're, we're concerned about the concrete down there underneath, because you made the remark that, that JEO wants to do some engineering stuff to see if that's okay underneath. When you have a pool that has been erupting for this many years, it may or may not be, we're concerned, Miller's were concerned about whether that cement would be so soft that it wouldn't even hold a caulk. And that's, and they will know that until they get in there and grind it off and start that process.
We all discussed keeping the pool there in the current location, I don't know, our pool committee felt that.
And they, and they said the night that they came here and gave their presentation, they were fine with leaving it there, but it would cost money to haul rock and so forth.
And they're not needing to do that.
And it should be built up by the six feet for it not to erupt again.
He said they're not going to do that.
They're not going to do it, but it'll erupt again, maybe.
But that's why they have an engineer that goes to check out.
It's a fifty-year-old pool, it's built with fifty-year-old technology, now they have new stuff, and an engineer they can't even, instead of the support.
Okay, so how are they going to keep the, the water from erupting to bottom? Is that something you just...
That is part of...
Part of what the engineer does.
Part of the engineering.
They'll figure it out, they'll figure it out, they'll figure it out.
That's why they go into that field.
I'm just saying, I've talked to two engineers on it, that both said, "The way you do that is put rock in the bottom and lift it, because you got to get it out of the water." So, that's all I know, what the engineers have told me.
You just said you didn't talk to an engineer.
No, I didn't.
You, you said that in your letter, that you haven't talked to an engineer, the pool committee, and the engineers have not been meeting with you.
I talked to...
So, now you're changing that?
Yes. Let me clarify. They have not reported to me, which is what I said in my letter, or whatever you read, but the fact that I talked to them was because they stood right here and gave a presentation and said, "That's the way to build it up." The other engineer was, just another engineer, which was Miller's and Associates, who built the pool at Bilkner. They built in a hole, they said they had to build it up, six foot, whatever, you got to get it out of water. I never, you know... So, if you want to pick what I said, that's fine, but I talked to two engineers...
You talked to them before they came in and did the survey?
What?
You talked to the engineer before they came in and did the survey?
It just says that initial, it says that initial meeting with JEO, and he's been serving, he's had a couple of, he talked to the...
We've had Zoom meetings with them, yeah.
Okay, I have not talked to them since that meeting, if that helps clarify.
Well, he's, I mean, he's...
Well, I have, but they, basically, what I was told was that they'd let me know when it was time to let me know, so...
But they're, they're good with it in that location.
Yes, they're good with it in that location.
But they're good with it, that's good enough.
Yeah.
And if you're a pool assistant, if you're...
Yeah, that, that's fine.
And we just, yeah, we just need to get a plan, because if we want to apply for any grants, we have to have a plan.
The only, I was not talking against that, other than to say that our concern is that it be built in such a way that it stops that eruption.
And I think that's what they'll do with their engineering.
But your question was, maybe we don't want to do the refurbishing, because that...
No, if we get the mill now, that changes the whole...
That's right, and I would feel more comfortable...
But if that's how it would get touched by the...
And I would feel more comfortable with new engineering than the old left patched.
I would.
That's what I was trying to say.
I guess my question, and I'm all for whatever the board, whatever the committee decides, do we know how we're going to come up with this four hundred thousand dollars?
I, we can apply, if there is many grants out there, we have to have a plan. You guys have to decide what plan it is.
We have to, we have the board have to decide.
You do.
And the big problem, we've always been told with all of our grant money, is that Crofton is not a poor town, and that we keep having that.
Well, the Gaven Parks Grant, I mean, there's areas, towns that got three, like, two hundred thousand dollars, three hundred thousand dollars for different projects, and, and now that they're going to be opening up concerts again, the arena one out of Lincoln is going to be an option, so I think we will have good, good opportunities. Plus, there's many other grant places, through the foundation, through Northeast Nebraska Economic Development and other areas, so I think you're, you're, it's best to go with the, the lesser expensive pool, because you can show how you're going to make that deficit to apply for those grants. It's easier to get from four hundred thousand to eight hundred than it is to get from four hundred thousand to one point six.
How many motions do we have with the refurbishment of the pool? In the same location?
The eight hundred fifteen thousand.
Right.
Yeah, and I can touch that around.
Yeah, I guess.
Yeah.
You know, this was, maybe it's almost two years ago.
Yep.
There was an engineer up there, he worked at that.
Yeah, sorry.
And he told us at that time, that pool was definitely good for ten to thirteen years. And we also looked at that time at the water that's in that pool in relationship to the water level that's running down the river. And that's when we brought up this idea where we could put some, some drainage child or something in there, which could maybe help that a little bit. Right now, if we go down and measure the water that's in that pool that's been in there all winter, what we've got, added water, it's going to rain, it's snow, or something like that, we have regained that much water, so I don't know, all this complaint we got about that it's too low.
Right. It's not.
It's not.
It's not.
It's not low. It's not low.
It's not my fault, so. Like-
You can just stomp on it anyway.
I know, just, just pop it, no.
Yes.
Where, where do they wanna put it? Where do they wanna move the pool?
We don't know. There are no other property. There are no other property we can put it on.
Okay.
And the other thing, that pool when it was built was a gun eye pool. A lot of people don't understand what a gun eye pool is. A gun eye is about six inch square reed rod and they shoot the water, the cement and all that in there under pressure, which made, was supposed to make that, I don't know, do you remember how much stronger it was? It was about five times as strong as where it was made. And it has no extra shot created, which is kind of the same thing, except it shoots it, well, it's made of somewhere, other than that.
I've got an hour of development to go through next, so.
That's okay.
JEO has put in eight of these refurbished pools with this liner and has had no problems. I asked, I'm like, what, what is a liner? Is it this flimsy thing that just kind of adheres to the concrete? It's actually welded together pieces that they bring in and weld together at the, at the location. So it's not this, just-
I'll take yours as a liner.
To, to be clear, it's a vinyl, it's a vinyl welding. We're not putting in a steel liner.
Oh, I don't know. I don't, yeah. Words that are, okay, let me see. I will tell you.
You said Lawson put one in last year.
They're, and they're opening it this year.
They're opening it this year.
Yep, and they applied for grants through other ways to get, they, that's how they got, I believe their bathhouse paid for.
For sure, we'll go to the copies.
Yeah. Does anyone else have any questions? I can try to answer them.
There's a few that may well come this last year that we didn't use.
Great.
I think, well, I figured for like forty-one thousand we were able to.
That was part of the discussion last year, was that we may, that they may use that money.
True.
So I don't know what the council's thoughts are on that, but-
I think they would use it all.
I don't know if you can pull from the previous, just-
Is that what you're suggesting?
That's the general one, here.
Without the bathhouse?
That's the, yeah, that's the bridge. Oh, no, this is the pool. This is the zero entry and then this is the bathroom. Yep. Yep.
In the sticker.
Yes. At least. That's my understanding, yep. And we can get a better visual and get more descriptions, great. Yep, oh, I'll talk with you and give you any information. If they get it on there, well, the pool's a thing, so.
To our new man. Is that the pool? Oh, and that was different, right?
Yes, the one that I said Thursday. That's mine, but I can print another one. I printed it on my home. I just ran out of paper to print for. You can, no, okay. Yes. Uh, membrane is sixteen mils. Six, zero.
So, you know, I, I like that if you have some each year, every other year.
Six, zero. Yep.
I made a motion to approve. I made a motion to approve refurbishing.
Okay, so James, do you want to do-
I made a motion to approve the refurbishment of the pool.
Scott, did you have a question?
I'm sort of, it's loud in here.
Go ahead.
Okay, let's go, let's, let's come back to our place, thank you.
Just, this is just me, just asking questions, I guess, but it says pool liner or similar waterproofing system. Is it, does that mean that the bidder gets to pick? Or do they have something that they're gonna nail down for you?
They have, the liner that we were given an estimate on is fifty thousand dollars from two different places, just the liner.
Is it like adhered with glue or something, or is it-
Yeah, they apply it to isolate member, I am not a pool technique person, so this is just me reading what it says. Um, they coat the interior of the pool with sanitizing agent and apply renoffelt adhesive. They apply the renoffelt eleven to isolate the membrane from the pool. They install the sixty mil renoffel assist PVC membrane through hot welding throughout. Allow for cutouts for all main drains. All penetrations will be terminated with compression flanges. Complete additional perimeter caulking, detail work, finish work to make a complete watertight installation. And then they stop above below the gutter. And it says that they will inspect the property before and after to make sure it's-
Below the gutter being those holes along the side that recycle the water?
Says termination to be at top of pool, below gutter.
Okay. So when you, this is again, just, just generic questions, I guess, if you're gonna tear out the, if I'm looking at the map right, you're tearing out like the southeast corner? Right? For the baby pool, what, could they do the rest of the, because you get new plumbing under the baby pool, right?
Yep.
Can you do the rest of it at the same time?
And that's actually going to be concrete. So the baby pool would be a concrete-
Right, the zero entry thing, but you'll get new plumbing under the new part.
Yes.
Could they do that, like that liner thing in the pipes underneath the old one? I mean, I don't know what's wrong with the current one necessarily, I guess, but since you got it open.
The bottom, the rupture, so the old-
It's just pushing up from underneath.
Yeah, this last year, so that's hot.
So they'll have to like sand that off or something.
But if they put the liner inside, is my understanding.
They'll have a surveyor come in and-
Yeah, liner.
Yeah, they'll fix the bump or whatever.
Make sure.
But I expect since you had it tore open and you'll have to replumb, because you'll be, are you gonna hook new pipes in the baby pool to the old pipes under the old pool?
I think those are gonna be all first.
Or new pipes coming out of something else?
Yep.
Because it says all machinery.
Yep, all new.
All mechanical systems and pool structure and equipment, so.
Karen, do you, do you remember was that, I, I think it was like a sixty mil, uh, liner, right?
Yep, yep.
So.
Is silage covered? Is that what it is?
How are we gonna eat it?
Fiber glass, fiber glass bathtub.
We use that vision. We use that vision.
So, yeah.
Okay. So, James, what was your motion?
To go ahead with refurbish with the liner and do it on the original spot, with the pool dead now.
So you, your motion is to refurbish, not make new, is that right? You're refurbishing, um, um, that means it's on present location.
Yep. Re-lining the pool, I think that-
Refurbishing the pool and hope, did, was that it?
And at the original words.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Can't do anything else.
Do you need to like accept this, or?
I don't-
JEO's gonna bid it at some point, they bid it out, right?
Yeah, they'll have to, they'll have to do all of that work.
Because this is just their estimate, this isn't a bid.
See, that's, I looked at this and said, is this just JEO's?
Yeah.
That's just-
It's their estimate of cost.
That's just an estimate.
Your bid might be different.
Yes, your bid might be less, too.
Might be more or less.
Could be.
That pool would be less.
You have local contractors, I could possibly need.
Yeah.
Is this one twenty-five all of JEO's services?
Yes.
Is that all their?
That's all professional services, so they'll, whatever, all the design testing, instruction.
Does that conclude what we already paid him or is this on top of?
No, that's all new, okay. Because all we asked for was a designing of JEO.
I'll second that motion.
Karen, do you know there are specific brands that Lawson received and-
I wanna say they actually did, they did CDBG for their bathhouse, I believe. But I'm gonna check into that and I've talked to JEO and they do no fee grant help too. And the foundation will help, um, for certain ones that they can only get, some of them are only for the foundation. There's ones through other entities in Nebraska like Gaiman Parks, which will be in September. And then if they reopen the, the CCCFF one, which is the arena one, that one will be open in January, so.
The city of Crofton's a member of the development district.
Yes.
You know, and they help with the grant writing on some of those.
I'll talk to Kelly tomorrow and see.
The board.
The KCPA.
Yeah, the one that, that holds laws, we do a grant writing.
They have a revolving loan fund, so I can check with them and see if that's something that we could, yeah. And we would like to start fundraising and then, um-
Hang on, wait, we have a motion on the floor, so let's take care of that, okay?
Okay.
Go ahead with that. We have a motion for refurbishing the pool at present location. Bob seconded, James made the motion. So I need to call for a vote from, we got an order here. Isla?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Anne Mary?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so then you can go ahead and-
Yes, we would like to start, yeah, we would like to start fundraising and talking to anyone that we can. Now that we have an idea as to what we wanna do, it'll be a lot better, so thank you.
Maybe the fundraising will turn out that you just built that new pool, then.
Change. With the bathhouse.
With everything. Uh, yeah, with the bathhouse.
Yeah. So I'm also the economic development director, so.
Go ahead, go ahead, yeah.
I've been working with, um, a project called the Meridian Bridge Partnership and that is people in Yankton and Nebraska and the state of Nebraska, so Cedar County, Knox County, um, and different entities to try to bring, um, acknowledgement of the Nebraska side of the bridge. Because the South Dakota side is so beautiful and they've got so many different things and the Nebraska side has monster blocks. So we're trying to figure out how we can grill, bridge that partnership. And one of the ways that we are doing that is Nebraska, the state of Nebraska tourism has chosen the Meridian Bridge as their, that's one of their destinations for this year's passport program. So that's very cool. So we're working on getting, um, information on the bridge, on Crofton and different areas and trying to get people to go between both states. So that's something that I'm working on. Um, Knox, News Channel Nebraska, it has worked to build a program this year called the Best of the Backroad Tour of Northeast Nebraska. How many counties does it have, Kim?
Ten. Yeah, a hundred and forty-seven businesses.
And those in Crofton are CJ's, Murdo's, the Lewis and Clark Polo Museum, which is also in the Crofton Hay Market, Lakeview Golf Course and Main Street Treasures and Louisville House Recreation. So, um, it's another kind of, it's not a passport program, but it's similar to in the way that they would visit these locations and get a stamp from these locations and just trying to get people to travel around our area, Northeast Nebraska. There's a Facebook page and website for that.
There'll be like seven thousand dollars in-
Yep, gift cards.
Gift cards given out to people that get the most of certain kind of stamps, who hits the most of the golf courses that are involved in it.
And we're also-
You spend the money, you spend money at a business, you get stamps.
We're also giving information on our lodging area, in the area too, for that as well. So people will hopefully, if they're going to go on some of these adventures, will stay in Crofton or the area and spend their money here. I have been working with Knox County Development Agency, which is out of center and it's all different areas from Knox County, just trying to, um, work towards what's going on. What are we doing in Knox County? How can we do it? What can we do to make it better? Working on the Knox County Passport. Last year we did it and chose several different locations. And we did pictures and we also, I encourage people to go up to these businesses. We had three in town. That was successful and so we'll be doing that again. Work with the Crofton Community Club, uh, I work with Crofton Planning and Owning, the Crofton Community Foundation. I've been meeting with several different people regarding daycare opportunities in our community because it is, I know there's a need. I've talked to many parents who feel there's a need. We, the daycare providers are telling me that, ones that I've spoken with, say that there's a need. So, um, just seeing what we can do and if we can help any of these, any, recruit any new people to come to our area. Work with NPBD Economic Development to hopefully work towards doing a strategic plan this year. Figure out what Crofton, what the community would like to do and how we can facilitate that. I'm working with Northeast Nebraska Economic Development. We last year repurposed sidewalk. We were repurposed CDBG funds, that was about thirty-two thousand dollars, it's probably a little more now. And we repurposed it to do ADA style, um, approaches on all of our downtown intersections. So you'll be able to go from one side to the other. And then also one of the ideas was to put a new door that's handicap accessible here. And worked on a pool project, working with Center for Rural Affairs. One of my ideas for Crofton is to do a farmer's market and I would like to just see something like that in our community. So working with them to find out how we can do that. Uh, my husband and I purchased a downtown business building and I am turning it into a coffee shop for the community because I felt the need was there and I just really like coffee, so. Um, so there is no longer an empty building. I have met with the school to discuss different opportunities and ideas. I have worked on business retention and expansion interviews and we had to stop the monster because of COVID, but we're starting those again. And those are something that the state economic development would like each community to do if possible. Business retention and expansion. I had a lot, sorry. Uh, one of the things I'd like to talk to the council about is the Knox County Movement Grant. That is due at the end of April and the funds from that are raised through lodging taxes. I know one of the ideas I had was, the way, the reason that I'm asking the city for this is because the city has to accept the funds. And then they would give them out to the appropriate project. One idea, one project that I met with was doing baseball field renovations by replacing and adding more comfortable shaded seats around the park. So people would be able to sit there and watch it, it'd be more accessible for people. And it'd be shady, so that's great. The baseball program would do, be the match in that program, in that grant. So the city would not have to pay anything for that. And they would get the rest of the funds for the project through fundraising and the baseball association would do that. It's up to a ten thousand dollar grant.
Do you need a motion on that?
I just need a-
A no?
The way I read that, that, the baseball association has to fill out that application.
Yes, but the city has to accept the funds.
And then we can deal with it.
Do we have to approve that? Do they just go ahead and do it?
That's the way I-
But the check gets cut, the check gets cut.
They just take, they just-
We'll do your market.
But they have to be approved by the economic development, right, over there?
Uh, by, yeah, the visitors here.
So they do all the approving. I think when, when they get further down with their application, they may want like a recommendation or something.
For sure. And that, the reason that that would be, another reason that that would be good is because it could bring more tournaments to our community, which would cause people to stay here and would help generate more tourism dollars. I guess I do need a motion, I don't know, do I need a motion to?
To, to-
Because the city has to accept, the city has to accept the funds.
I think we need to have the application done first.
Okay.
And then, and then we can, then we can do.
It's due at the end of April.
Right.
So that's my only problem is if they get the application done and the meeting isn't until-
Do we have a motion to-
We can service, service the fiscal agent for that grant, we could do that, right? We can make a motion to service the fiscal agent where we receive the funds and then disperse it while they need to be.
What, yeah.
Right?
I don't know.
The funds won't, the funds won't, it's just automatically, the way I read it, if that is accepted. that is accepted, then the funds are just dispersed through the city for openness.
Right, but we're supposed to take a check in in order to give it out?
I think you have to have a cert, they have to have a certain project.
Then we would just approve that new check to the baseball when they came about.
So that we'd be serving as a fiscal agent, so we'd give in the money, give it back out again.
Yes.
With the fiscal agent.
Well, that's, that's how the, yeah, whatever.
Because they want.
But then we can't approve till, than paying it to them till we have it in hand.
Right.
So.
Oh, yeah, they'll definitely fill out an application.
Okay.
See, they've, they've got the application. They'll make all of that, get it all through.
I just don't know, I just want to make the board aware of it and make sure that there's nothing that we need. I don't know how your side of the table works, so.
This is, this is the same grant that was, went to the volunteer last year, but they've changed some guidelines according to that. So, there's no guarantee that other people will apply. So, but whoever gets it, the way I read it was that will come to this. The only thing, one of the big things they've changed is it's a, it's a, what do you call it, magic grant?
Yep, it's a twenty-five percent magic in.
And then it goes through the ci, it's just like, they have to go to the economic development and they pass it. Then it goes to the, to the county commissioners and they pass it. They make choices. Then they send the money to the city rather than whoever wins the grant just for openness.
And then they'll follow up on that.
And then when we cut the check to them, we just have.
And then they'll have eighteen months to complete the project and then they'll follow up to make sure the project, not that it wouldn't, but just for clarification purposes.
So, all we have to, because there's other people can apply for that.
Sure. You have a question, Erin?
No. So, we don't, do we need?
Yeah, but I, I, it's an.
You're okay.
Do we need to vote? I don't, I don't know.
There is not.
No, I just want to make sure that if they apply, that the city will.
The city is obligated to give it to whoever wins it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll agree with you if it goes back to the project.
Perfect. All right.
It'll go back to the project.
That's all I've got, so, sorry.
Yeah, we, we can't vote to give it to the baseball, to the baseball winner.
Yeah, sure.
So, the timeline, so we approved the JEO engineer's estimate on it, so we gotta give it out. So, what is our timeline to do that? Are we gonna get a pool open this summer and then start, start work next fall, next spring? What's kind of our timeline?
Labor Day.
So, JEO can't even get in there for an inspection until we're done with the summer, right?
I doubt it.
I can ask that tomorrow. I can do that.
That's one of the things that's gonna be certified, because if you said that part of this is the engineers are gonna come out and inspect and draw at the bottom of that, you know, draw the process. So, if we're gonna open the pool, they can't get through it so bad.
And I believe you'll need all of the funds to do that.
So, that's where I'm going with it. How soon will we need to pull eight hundred thousand to get?
Tomorrow.
So, what I'm thinking is, you got like four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars to grant to get, whatever you make balances. I don't want to sit and wait, you know, I still see that pot.
Right.
Over one thousand bucks. So, so I just, I just wanted to make sure we're all thinking long-term, you know, like I said, I wanna, I wanna get this project done. I don't really like your bank saying, you know, if there's two hundred thousand left, you know, three hundred thousand left, three hundred thousand left on a twenty-year note at two hundred percent, that's, you know, that's a twenty thousand per year payment, you know. So, whatever we, if you long-termize financing, we get that done. Just explore all options, just so we can.
Thank you.
So, the eight hun, you're talking about the eight hundred thousand guesstimate here that we need to figure out.
So, if you get it down to wire here, we need to write a check and then we sold two hundred, three hundred, whatever short, you know, I just, I just want to make sure that we're thinking about financing options to get the rest of it done and how we're gonna cash for that.
So, are we thinking that the four hundred thousand less fees is going to that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, definitely. Yeah. It's, it's only for a pool.
And we almost, I mean, we'd have to start at Labor Day if we want to have a pool by next spring because then we'll, we'll go a year without another pool again.
Going back for the same one again and we're waiting.
I just hope one of that gets, we, we're held up on money. So, whatever I can do on the bank.
Thank you.
Get us, get us rolling. And I can't say to put everybody on the foundation because it's, it's gonna be COVID on me, but we, we interest on that half million we down with, with service that loan payment on four hundred thousand. So, under the foundation figure that, but I guess I'm gonna, I will push for that.
I would push for that.
And that would have to be through an application to make that a long-term thing.
Is there a formal application, Erin?
I don't think we've really got a formal application per se, but.
Right.
Yes, we presented to the, um, so, are we able to give twenty thousand dollars from last year's pool being closed? That was mentioned at two meetings last year that since the pool would be closed due to COVID and you're saving twenty thousand dollars. If I had a pool, you know, you didn't have.
Yes, I said, that, I said that we usually lose twenty thousand and it would be nice if we could not lose that twenty thousand.
Well, and, but it was mentioned at two meetings.
And maybe put twenty thousand towards it, yes. Um, we have, we have, um. Erin, do you have the, the lost fund? The, we have, let me check this. We've used some of the lost fund to pay engineers. Um, and.
So, in budget, we have a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars that aside our general, or capital, capital improvements. I make a motion to ear tag that or make a motion to apply that to the pool.
Well, I'm not, I would, I would prefer and ask you to not ear tag anything to, after we meet with the auditors next week.
Why would that be?
Because they're the experts about, we've changed a lot of the, we've put a lot of the recreation, the, see if I can say this right. The parks and recreation is where the pool funds were located. They, in the past, were fed by the lost fund. We have pulled those out of there and the lost funds have been separated and kept separate. And we've fed that much or dedicated that, probably that much to the engineers.
You have.
So, in effect, we've already dedicated that twenty thousand to the engineers.
But, but in your meetings, you, you mentioned another twenty thousand on in addition to that.
Well, I'm just saying that I, we're into another fiscal year now. So, let me, so let me take a look at that.
So, you're placing budgets for this year.
So, let me take a look at that budget more closely and visit with the, the auditors as to where we can move money. You have, you have general funds, you have restricted funds. And you have, and, and we'll have to vote to move the money before we can dedicate it. If that makes sense. We'll have to make, we'll have to dedicate, can't dedicate something that's not been moved into the.
Well, yeah, my question was, did we dedicate it as well?
No, we have not.
There's only seventeen thousand left in that park. So, we could lost account as of the end of the fiscal year, according to your report.
Gotcha. There's eighteen thousand Cedar, that hasn't been touched.
Eighteen thousand.
At the Cedar Security Bank.
Yeah, right, but in the lost one, so, there's only seventeen thousand left.
Is that seventeen on that report? And then we, see, we have this next, this paper that's been going into. So, I don't have this figured out.
Oh, I got a question. Um, do we have to set wages for lifers now?
If we're gonna hire people, we should.
Yes.
Okay.
We should. You know, we've made them in the past.
Um, I believe you, my card started at ten pool operators were either twenty-five or fifty cents more. And I believe the manager was either eleven or eleven, or the assistant manager was at eleven or eleven point five.
I was, I, I don't have it in front of me. I was thinking nine and a half, ten and ten and a half. If we change right there, think.
Oh, I have her, she called Jackson.
Okay.
And so, he said he started off at ten.
At ten, okay.
And he was the beginner. And Lacy was a pool operator.
I know, we, we talked about it right there before we opened.
Yeah, and Lacy was a pool operator. Um, and so they made one because they have to meet, they have to go get more certified.
Sure.
More certification. So, they made.
We never, say that again. Ten?
I believe you was at ten, pool operators were at ten twenty-five, and then assistant manager was at eleven or eleven point five.
Whatever those numbers were, if we can hire people back from two years ago, wages, get them to come and do their job, that's a good deal.
Well.
If that's.
If I can make a suggestion, why don't we look at, because I don't have it in front of me, why don't we say that we will add to each of those categories ten cents an hour? So, the ten would be ten, ten, ten. Is that fair?
That's fine.
And then we could offer them that. So, they've got a rate. It's ten cents.
Right.
And rather than say, well, you started at a regular wage or what you're waiting for, it's a ten cent incentive. Would that work for you? So, instead of ten dollars an hour, maybe a ten, ten.
Yes.
And every, every one we set last year just added ten cents an hour.
Yep.
You want to make a motion to that?
Have the, I should.
How I'm making a motion to add, what do you do with Nikki though?
Nikki got six hundred bucks. We, we kept, we had, we paid Nikki six hundred bucks last week.
We're not gonna add ten cents on that. What are you gonna do?
You want ten cents? I'll agree with you.
Ten dollars, Nikki.
Are you gonna, are you gonna do that six hundred?
I'm gonna do that.
Okay.
So, make the motion to increase the hourly wage by ten cents.
Ten cents an hour to all categories except Nikki. Nikki has to stay stuck where she is. Okay. That's the motion. You got that? Anybody? Made, made by Bob, seconded by James, Larry?
Yes.
Isla?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
And James?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bringing that up. Thank you.
Um, Nikki, come and talk to me when, on your free time because the auditors have set up some things they want with the.
Yep, Nikki, I sure will. I'll, I'll make some applicants, appropriate videos by eleven hour. Thank you.
But that's always their big credit, so.
Okay.
And I thought we were doing well because it said they weren't coming out and then they called when they said, yep, we're coming out and there'll be three of us. And I said, oh crap, now what do they do? Because it's usually two. So, they got me nervous. And then I, then I, you know how you do, you like talk yourself into what you want to believe? So, I said, they got a trainee to bring in and this is a perfect place for them to bring it. So, anyway, they'll be here next week. What else is on the agenda? Are we good? Nope, not here right now. Um. Shall we delay for another day? Yeah, the speed sign. Jonathan. You can come up if you want. If you've got anything you'd like to tell them. And then you can just cover whatever you want to here. I think they have a copy of that.
Cheryl said you should have a copy of my schooling request, the description of that.
The what? Can't hear you.
Check, okay. In your package, it should have a handout for a schooling request. So, it's, um, I believe it describes it pretty well on there. So, that's a yes or no from you if you're willing to pay for it. It's a three-day course. All the information it doesn't have on there is the amount of ammunition it takes. It's three to four hundred rounds. So, I think that covers all of that.
Proximate cost.
Proximate cost would be six hundred dollars, I believe, is at the bottom.
No, I mean for the ammunition.
Uh, we have the hell of a cover.
Oh, I thought you said, yeah, okay, got it.
But it's got the cost.
Yeah, the animal's already, yeah, the animal's already paid for it. Let's see.
What does the schooling work?
It's for rifle training. I haven't had any training on rifle for over a year. It's a parish of skill. So, I'd like to be able to hit a target. Yes.
Where could you find three or four hundred rounds like lighting?
That's what you say.
Well, that's what I, that's what I thought two years ago, so.
It's a cost, no matter what you look.
Let's see. Not a done. Third item is, um, my opinion was requested on the radar signs. I believe it's a community club providing four thousand or was that?
Main Street.
Main Street Treasures was providing four thousand dollars for a radar sign. The two options that they provided, detailed information on, one's a Elon City brand, other one's a radar sign brand. They're both about the same price. Elon City was a little bit cheaper, but then also we had cable hookups to go to existing pole, whereas the radar sign had its own pole setup. Either way, we'd have to go through the Nebraska DOT to get it approved and they will decide exactly where it goes. But we can request roughly where we want it, whether it's on east side, west side, or north, either on Highway twelve, one twenty-one.
Do you want to remove it or every, you just gotta put it in one spot?
Uh, the options I see here are permanent options. I didn't research any mobile ones.
It's a, a single unit, right?
It is a single unit. Be about a little over four thousand dollars, I believe. So, Main Street Treasures would cover the bulk of it. And I did talk to Dean Schwartz out of Norfolk DOT and he gave me a rundown of roughly how to do this.
He'd use it when he lived here, so that's okay. What's, what's the maintenance factor?
Uh, the two models that were highlighted here were solar panel ones. So, the maintenance would be almost nothing unless something breaks.
Main Street head companies, those and thought that if they give four thousand, it would get a reasonable, you know. One of the things.
Did I talk to Dean Schwartz as well?
Yes, I did talk to Dean out of Norfolk.
Yeah, that's who we talked to.
Okay.
And through those because that's another contact.
Yep.
Right.
And you're not stuck with those, but that's what he kind of suggested.
And these have already been approved once by them, so they're most likely to be approved again.
Think when you get wheels under them and start moving, it's when they get more cost, but, you know.
I guess I was in there, somebody was a mobile one. It's gonna be a hard structure fixed in one pole, one side.
Yes. Uh, that's the two that I saw here were fixed ones. It'd be on a pole, it'd be a fixed location.
See, when Mick came into the office and talked to us about it, he said, you know, they're just held on by this two or three little bolts. You could move that and take it somewhere else, but the, the DOT set them on.
No, the DOT regulates where it goes and the other ones, we don't touch it.
So.
A bolt sign would really benefit us because we have some folks, I live right here on the corner, and they hit the street right here and it's like a race to the top of the hill. I'm always worried about the kids out there. Some people that do, you know, thirty to fifty before, and there's no stopping them. So, it's, it's a straight shot out of bounds. So, a whole one, you can move it around. Cause I know, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, no.
They all went, when you go over the bridge now with the.
Yeah.
It scares people.
Yeah.
All night every day.
I was going a little fast, so.
So, let me throw this out there. Would you guys like him to research what would cost extra for the count, for this council if the Main Street Treasures could send four thousand, you know? Do you want to look at something that might cost us more but would have wheels?
I think.
I think the one with the mobile would kind of give the person a ton of it, where is that?
Mobile, they do that.
It's five, it's just here, way down in the slow down of that area.
We can table it till next month.
Yeah, have them research it, see what a mobile will cost, if there is.
Or not.
Yep, I think that's a good idea.
Let's, let's table it and then you can research that.
Okay.
Maybe we can put a couple grand with that four and have something with wheels.
I'll drag in a post.
I would like to make the motion to approve your training though.
Yeah, I'll second that. Yeah, that's good. I didn't know we had any.
Bob, that was a motion to approve the training?
Yes.
I'll second it.
James, second?
Where's that at?
Uh, Jackson. It's a suburb of Sioux City. Uh, Jackson, it's a suburb of Sioux City, it's almost exactly one hour drive from here.
So he'll drive back and forth, it won't make costs, just stay?
Yeah, I'll be driving there every day, it's, there'll be no hotel cost.
You're going to have a city vehicle, or?
Depends if I have someone working those days, if I have someone working those days, then no.
Who fills in for you?
Uh, see if I can get a private filler for me.
Uh, Bob?
Yes.
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
And Isla?
Yes.
Uh, no, the third and final one is a pay raise request, I typed something up for you to read, and I was able to articulate that better than I could here, so.
Does that go with more hours to work also?
I've already worked for more than forty hours, so.
Are you?
On average, it's more than forty, so.
Yeah, I was just thinking the same thing, after the increase in salary, because when I look back at the reflect back, is it, for some, I don't know how it came to be, but it came to be where the, the total, um, public safety police this year, what we expended was almost thirty thousand dollars over what we had budgeted, um, and so, you know, it's a fifty percent over what we have, original budget, original budget, buying this like, so, do you not have any idea what your, with the number, I thought that a number of overtime hours that you had this year, what the total cost increase would be for next year?
Uh, let me explain something about last year's, um, ten thousand plus benefits of that was, um, the, the suit from Pat Smith was paid in wages, because that's what the suit was about, so it's over ten thousand of that.
Which would be impossible to budget.
And then, and then that was the whole place department, so you had your wages, your benefits, the gas, the, the maintenance of vehicle.
I just like, just kind of stepped out from me when budget was sixty-four thousand, and then total expenditure was ninety-four thousand, and just like, a little alarm went off in my little head, like, oh, you know, that's, just seems like a, a large discrepancy on the budget, and I don't know, just, and you're like, the ten thousand dollars, you can't anticipate that, there's no way.
Well, and then there was the schooling in there too, so.
What did you start?
I started late night, two thousand nineteen.
So I think you got some, you got a lot of eight towns on here, is there any towns in the state that pays less than we do? Because every town out here pays more than we do, and I, I'm from Beamer, Beamer's company works two days a week, Friday and Saturday nights, so, I'll pay you.
I think I did find, uh, one or two sheriff's offices that did start at seventeen dollars an hour.
Okay.
Do we know how much raise we're asking for?
From sixteen to nineteen.
Uh, that's for patrolmen.
Raise immediately from nineteen fifty to twenty fifty.
So a dollar an hour, and then there was something else in there?
Uh, yes, on the two-year anniversary of at least starting, I requested another dollar an hour raise to twenty-one fifty.
And so, a dollar an hour raise at regular hourly rate, forty hours, is going to be four thousand dollars a year increase without the sal, without the overtime paid, so, I don't know how many hours of overtime there are, we forget this magical discreet overtime kind of thing. On the average week, and I know there's no such thing, but about how many hours do you spend in a week doing your job?
Average week?
That's very bad.
Somewhere, somewhere between forty and forty-five is the typical week.
That's when you're standing along guy, right, without any help, or is that what happens?
Correct.
And when you do have an assistant or help, or, then that, then you can keep closer to forty, still kind of the same deal, you never know, because, you know, there's times where you need to be an assistant to that person as well.
I do try to keep it close to forty, but sometimes overtime gets to me.
You even at the same page that you start?
Correct.
So when you relieve, who pays that? You know, you said you got something filled, from a town, do they pay that?
No, he's, uh, still technically on payroll, so he'd be paying the patrolman wages, uh, which is currently sixteen dollars an hour, and I'm requesting that be raised to nineteen dollars an hour.
Step nine, street out twenty-one, and you have the step nine. Just go over to twenty-one, street out starting tomorrow, step one anniversary, or not the twenty-one fifty in the year, the anniversary.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
Um, the lifeguards have to pay for their own training, which is two seventy-five plus another fifty for the pool operators, I don't know if this would be a good time, but maybe they can get some of their past rehers also, at ten hours an hour. I work for the state.
Hey, we just gave you a time.
I know, I know, I know, I work for the state, we got a two percent, I mean, plus the work.
I, I-
And I've been there twenty years.
Really? Wow.
Twenty years.
That's awesome.
I mean, I might wish you had a raise, but I think two dollars, within a few months, is pretty exaggerating, I went four years without having a raise, working for the state. I mean, a dollar raise, I think that's really great, and getting the training paid for.
How much revenue do we get in from tickets? The tickets you get out, how much does our town get back?
I don't know the exact breakdown, how much money goes back to the city directly, I believe the city would get the most from city ordinance tickets, for city ordinance violations, which will be processed, prosecuted by the city attorney.
We don't have to prosecute that, that goes to the county? She doesn't matter, it goes to the county.
Because maybe, you know, the miller trucks that go through here, maybe if they got stopped a few times.
Especially on the Drake brakes.
They would slow down.
They do a lot.
And we'd make money.
We have a son.
I know. We're all right. Yeah. I'd like to table this, I'd like to do a little bit more research on this. I'd like to call around and talk to some people before.
Uh, if you want the paper that based the numbers on, I can print that out for you if you want.
Oh, I'm sorry, what was that?
Uh, the eight towns that I'm referencing, I can print out a copy of the report that basing that on.
Okay.
If you want, I have to, anyone else on the council wants it.
Okay, let's kind of table all that, we need, we need Jonathan to research the speed sign, right?
Yep.
Okay, okay, so, let's take it. So then Bob, that.
Okay, I don't know if everybody has their copy of three fourteen, ordinance three fourteen?
I think I have a copy.
Yeah, you have to.
Again, I really should have.
So in unfortunate circumstance, where something happened to our mayor, hopefully it never happened, or in circumstance where our next mayor is incapable of forming all the tasks that, performing all the tasks that she's doing at this point in time, I think it's in the best interest of our city to look at our city ordinance for a city administrator, I'm not, I'm not-
Him?
I'm not advocating at this point in time of running out and hiring a city administrator post-haste or anything like that, but, in a situation, our situation arises, I think we need to be prepared for that, so there's a city ordinance three fourteen, which talks about the basic description of a city administrator, and so, I, like I said before, I'm not running out and, or not, I'm not advocating today trying to open the application for a city administrator this evening, we'll see how this all goes or whatever, but, in a situation where we did need a city administrator, uh, we'd like to look at the ordinance and, or I'd like to look at the ordinance and go through that step by step, and make sure that if this situation did arise, that we would have a clear understanding of what the job requirements for that person should be. So I don't know how we want to do this, or if I can keep record of it, in order to do this, we have to have the ordinance in our hand or presence, uh, to modify it, and we do have the full ordinance in hand, signed and dated by, oh, the former mayor and city clerk Diana Wendell Frum, and it was sealed on, uh, November second of one fifteen. And looking at those items, members of the council, are there things that we like to address or change if we needed the situation to have a city administrator or manager? I don't exactly understand the terminology, and the mayor tried to clarify for me, if it is a manager or administrator.
Okay, I was going to say, did you read the state statutes for the chance?
I read the state statutes in regards to changing city ordinances, but I did not as far as administrator or manager.
Just, and I, I'm going from memory here.
Okay.
I didn't look them up for sure either, but, a city administrator, um, if I remember at the state statute correctly, you may have a, a city administrator at a class one or two, or whatever, but not in a village, and the reason is because of the population, I believe, and being able to afford it, that's part of it, however, um, we are, since we are a class, is it one or two? Two?
Two.
Two, class two, uh, that's backwards, I always think the two is being the biggest, but it's still not the biggest, it's the smallest, so, um, if you, uh, a city administrator works at the, at the direction of the mayor and council, that's what the state statute says. The city manager basically replaces the mayor, and the mayor is a mayor in figurehead only, it's kind of like the king of England, okay? The prime minister does the work and the king gets to wear the jewels, that's the manager's part, you cannot have a manager in a class two, so that's the, that's the argument about the type. Like you made the remark, no matter what you call them, what would you want them to do? Now, you, this is yours, you can do what you want to, if I, if, if this were up to me, or my suggestion, or my input, I would say, um, that maybe you should just repeal the whole ordinance, and if you decide to get a city administrator, start over, because there's a lot of things in there that you don't, does that make sense? Here, you can have it.
There are-
I want to point out to you that the first, that section one oh four, mayor duties and powers, the mayor of the city has the superintendents in control of the affairs and officers of the city, that's the original ordinance written way back, and is in that red book of ordinances, that basically would go by. It also goes right along with state ordinance, it's almost the same wording. Um, the next sentence is the change, and, um, basically to have one, this whole thing is wrong, because you can't have a one oh four noted and then change it, that, you know, and then if you follow through the, the two fourteen, if you look right at the top, it says the wrong number, so section one, section two, in other words, it was kind of messed up. My suggestion, I just never got to it, my suggestion was always going to be toss it, go back to the original ordinance, which is the paper I gave all of you, that says what the mayor's job, what the council's job, what the, the, you know, the committee's jobs and all of them, and then have, then decide what you want to do with those duties, and, and we talked about recodifying bill ordinances, if you want to do that, if you decide, and, and then, and work on, I would say, work on, if you have a city administrator, work on what you want their job to be, get that in order before you ever set up the ordinance, then you've got an explanation of what you want. As far as something happening to your mayor, and I appreciate the fact that you would regret that, Bob, but, um, that's covered in our statute. Something happens to the mayor, the city, council, chairman steps into the mayor's position, and a new person is named aboard, and that's in both city and state ordinance. As far as what you can do with city, you can not do anything in the city ordinances that goes against state ordinances, so you can't create something that goes against state ordinance, so you can extend state, um, you cannot do less, so, if the state says that you can drive a four-wheeler with a red flag, you cannot say, well, in Crofton, you can ride a four-wheeler without a red flag, because we're special, you can't go get a state. So that's all I can help with at this point, this, you know, but, this is kind of mixed up, it has two or three sections, two fourteen, two sixteen, one oh four, it's hard to make, I would just say, I, I haven't gone by it, because we don't have a city administrator, I just went back to the original ordinance.
And I, I would not be in opposition to you, and I don't, the technology is, behooves me, or doesn't behoove me, because I'm like, in my world, hey, let's get a Google Doc and, and put in our input and see what it is, and then see how it aligns with the city administrator states and state Nebraska, and then we, that way we have our input, but I don't know, from the message that I got, if we can do that, can we share a Google Doc as members of the board?
Probably not, because that would violate open meeting.
So instead of-
The open meeting law, if I, if, if, you know, you could check all this, well, but the open meeting law, you got, you, we could stand three in a group just inside that door over there, at the beginning or end of a meeting, and all say, let's do this, let's do that, and make a decision, and come in and say, well, we just decided, we, you guys back to it done, and so, and that's violation of open meeting.
You can't do that.
Because you made a decision outside the meeting.
So we would have to have a work group session to go through the city administrator?
Yes, you should have a meeting, so everybody had a voice. The other thing is that, you know, you can't, um, there was, the, the, this is hard to, this is hard to determine according to the secretary of state's office, because it's hard to prove, so even though people bring charges for open meeting violations, they're hard to prove, because the whole idea is making decisions outside of the council, that's hard, who can prove what decision was made? Who can prove you came to an agreement? Um, when I first came on board, we were told we couldn't have the normal Christmas party at Keeler's house, because it'd be all the board members there, well, we went anyway, most of it, but, um, there was no business taking place. The one, one case that made it to the Supreme Court that I found, and you could go through all of that, you know, charges about Brown versus this, and this city versus this, and all this, the one that actually made it to the Supreme Court was ORE, ORE built ethanol plant on the east side, on the south side of town, and after it was built and up and running, they invited the city council and the mayor out to tour their plant, they took them out to lunch afterwards, there was no city business, they were already in operation, there was, there was nothing that the city could do for them or against them at that point, basically, they already had all their permits, uh, but they said, come and see what we're doing, you know, to promote, and they took them out to lunch, somebody brought charges that they broke the open meeting law, it went all the way to Supreme Court, and Supreme Court said, they did not break the open meeting law, because no, this, no business was even discussed. So, it is attaching, but we are told constantly-
This would be business, all right?
Pardon me?
In this case, it would be, it wasn't discussed.
Yes, yes, so then you would have to have a legal meeting or something, now, you can meet in twos, and that's not a form.
So if I don't share my Google Doc, give everybody the playbook, they'll edit it?
We get daily input from the League of Municipalities, our clerks get daily stuff that says some city asked, for example, one said, you know, this happened in our town, can you give us advice? Well, and they will, every email says, if you answer this in a group, you may be breaking the open meeting law. And that's just from the clerks.
I can make an email to each one of them individually, ask their opinion.
Now, we send you your packets all, because we're not asking you for a decision, we're giving you your information. But if we sent out a letter that said, we're going to introduce the swimming pool, and we would like, you know, you to approve it tonight, or even if we said, we would like you to table this till next month, we would be asking for a decision.
Okay.
Does that help any?
Yeah, expedite the process and not take your valuable time away, I will send an individual email to all the council members, asking for their input on the ideas for the city manager.
There you go.
And I'll compile the document and present it in the next meeting.
Absolutely, there you go.
As long as you don't take a straw poll, yeah, you're fine.
Okay, thank you.
As long as what?
As long as you don't ask them to give their opinion about how they vote on something, then you're fine.
I agree.
Finding ways to go around the open meetings law is not generally a good idea.
Say that one more time.
As long as you don't ask people to make a decision, disseminating or asking for information or opinions is fine, but you can't ask them how they're gonna vote on, you can't take straw polls, you can't all agree ahead of the meeting to do something, you can't, I mean, just, don't, don't do that, do it here.
But sharing a Google Doc, then it'd be okay, because I'm asking their opinion.
You're coming from the school side, and the school has all their own attorneys, of course, but the school allows the usage of the spark material, which allows for the dissemination of information. They don't ever ask any of the board members to comment on any of them, they don't ever ask any of the board members to give us your opinion about what you think about that, all of that is held at the meeting.
It's all about information that you can send out in a group.
I mean, that's technically the definition of an executive session as well. Executive sessions are not allowed to get a straw poll, or get everybody on the same side of something behind closed doors and then come out and vote, it's to give information that you think is sensitive.
Right.
Anytime you ask someone for their opinion, or you give the implication that you're conducting business without taking a vote, or you're, I mean, there are hundreds and hundreds of case law studies that will just generally give you the idea that's a bad idea.
Yep.
If you want to ask somebody's opinion, and they send you an email, and you bring it to the meeting, and you introduce it all to the meeting, and say, here's everybody's responses, then that's great, but they're all sitting here too.
And is what he's saying okay, that he can compile it then? Or is that in, in essence, putting it all together in favor of our guests?
You want letters from the attorney general's office, or don't you? It's not, I don't care. You guys, what you want.
I think you're walking on tonight.
I just don't think there's, I've argued against that for schools as well, there's no reason to have, this is my personal opinion, this is not a legal opinion, there's no reason to have email addresses that only schoolwork, I mean, anything, anything you do, any business you conduct is obtainable by the public if you're doing city business. So if you send it from your personal email, if you send it from your phone, if you send it from your home computer, any of those things are admissible in court, as you send an email and ask somebody their opinion about how you're gonna vote on something. I mean, all of those things are bad. I mean, if you want to keep it clean, do it here.
And if you want an ordinance to cover that, just ask the attorney to prepare a general ordinance, because if you follow state law that says the administrator works at the direction of the mayor and the council, then at any meeting, the mayor and the council can say, we would like you to do this.
Now, I don't know of anything that says you can't hire an administrator if you want to.
No, I didn't say that.
At any level. I thought you said a second class couldn't have an administrator.
Oh, no, you can't, it's a village, you can't have, a village cannot have an administrator.
I remember that, this is just from my own personal input, there was a discussion when I very first got here about whether this city was a village, a village or a second class city. What are the breaks?
It is, it is a, it is the size of a village.
Right.
But we applied for second class.
Voluntarily become second class status.
And the advantage to that, and now I'm on shaky ground, I'm not sure, but I think the big advantage that I heard was, once you revert to the village, and I, that you get less funding from the state. So we don't want to give up our funding. So I don't know any advantage to going back to village, we're on that, like six, seven hundred, we're on there back and forth, so it's kind of an advantage, I think seven hundred might be the break.
It's eight, eight to five is what I was just...
Okay.
It doesn't, I just was wondering, because I remember that discussion way back, way back when.
And that was way back when we dropped under that eight, which was a long time ago that that was voted in, but I think we had to renew it, and I think that was renewed, somebody, we had to go back to the history of whatever. So I'm not sure. Okay, is that, are you good, Bob, with what you wanted?
Yep, I got all that.
There's committee selection process, and I think that was your request also?
Yeah, I would just like to know where we are on the selection of the economic development committee. For me personally, it's like, we, and obviously from, from Aaron and now where we're going with the pool, and I think, we need to be a fully functioning unit, and in order to do that, we need to get those members approved. I don't know what the, is that a straight appointment by you, those people are straight appointed by you, or they, I don't understand the process of that economic development, is that appointment by the mayor to that committee? So they can't do their job unless they have a committee of people to, to do that, to work with. And so, and I don't know whether the committees are still hanging open, I know we have the, we talked about the one that approved those with the last month.
Planning Zone.
Planning Zone, but I don't know where we are with the other ones. But I would just plead to whoever it is, whoever's listening, to make this work so we can move forward and make progress on this, because we're, we aren't handicapping our entire city by not letting us move forward because of that. So I guess, anybody else?
And, and, yes, and I need to just finish talking to the people that would recommend it to me, so.
Is that gonna be, you know, next month, couple months, where we look at?
Well, it's been a busy time, and I've also, and I've also asked for some reports that I have, don't feel I've got complaint against, so.
Cheryl, we've got a complete report from Aaron tonight.
I did.
Complete. Alan has sent you three emails with all of our goals and objectives, you had a plan, he's done everything he can, so the fact that he doesn't come down and talk to you evidently is why you're not, we don't want people who have volunteered from our community to help serve on board. I don't know why, if he called him and asked him, that makes a big difference, that you don't take his word for it, or that you don't want him on board, who will gladly resign.
Okay, let me explain a couple things, when I've asked for the reports, you say it's asked, given me everything you ask, I ask for. I have asked for a, what I felt was a more current budget, and I have received three budgets that are all copies of the S, the suggested budget from the state when the 840 was first written.
I had a minutes of meeting right here, where you agreed, the council voted on accepting the budget that was approved, and that was at a September meeting, and when Alan presented it at the August meeting, he presented the economic development budget, he would like the board to approve the estimated 750 from the current year's lost fund for a computer for a committee slash...
That's not a budget, Irma.
This is...
The budget, the budget that was suggested...
Can I explain this one, so that we can get this committee decided?
Well, I don't know, that's not...
He also said that this, the budget for this last fiscal year would pay for the computer. Okay, then the committee would assume 930 of the cost of dues to professional organizations in the next budget, as well as $2,000 sort of wages of the director. He asked that the director be allowed 20 hours per week rather than the current 10 hours. Mayor Law had advised that the board could take the suggested budget into consideration, and that no vote can be taken at this time. The E D budget would be considered with the finalized city budget and approved or disapproved at that process. Then, going on to the September meeting, which was right before the budget hearing, Aaron Phillips, economic development director's contract was addressed by the board. Phillips is now on a contract for 16 hours per week at 15 dollars per hour. Budgeted agreement is that the economic development lost funds of $3,500 per year, which starts now this fiscal year, will be credited to the city operating fund. A computer was purchased for the economic development director, for the economic development fund, which will be $5,552.61, which will be paid to Aaron Phillips as reimbursement for the computer.
I was gonna say, I don't think we paid 5,000.
I said, okay, fine, sorry. It's okay, the motion was made by Stefan to approve the contract for Aaron, seconded by me, eight ice, main, broader, Stefan motion here. So at that time, you agreed to that budget.
Okay.
What more can we do? And that was followed, by the way, in this balance sheet for the year end, the lost fund should have about $38,670.2, and you've got $27,000. You took $3,000 out of last year, and this was only three fourths of this year's budget. And plus, there's a balance left from 930.
You gotta slow down there a little bit, but what did you say?
This part.
There's 37,000?
There should be.
What, and so where is that?
38,000.
So where is that budgeted for, Irma? What's, what's that budgeted?
We, we fought to get the $4,000.
No, I'm asking you, if there's 37,000, should that not be in the budget? All you said was in the budget was 3,000 for wages and 500 for a computer. I want a budget that tells me, this is our project, and we're gonna spend 20 of that 30,000 doing that.
We said 10, was it 10?
You had, you gave me a budget that said, if we start in 2008, which was in the original 840, it was an example of a budget, if we have this much for this many years, we're gonna wind up with how many thousands of dollars, and this is where it can be spent. You have a 30,000 for projects and a 20,000 for this. So there's no saying, I have, I have yet to hear from any of you, what exactly would you like to have as a project, if you had a meeting that said, we'd like to work on this, and we'd like to put that much towards it.
That means, and we probably would like to...
Projects, I want, I want in writing, what project do you want to do, and what, how much money do you want to put towards it?
I mean, we need the committee, if we can get those people on the committee, it'd be a lot easier if we don't have a meeting and discuss projects, they don't have a full committee.
But they never, for two years.
But at this point in time, I want to go forward, I want to move forward.
And I want, I want a budget. You guys always talk about my budget, my budget doesn't agree. You just talked about how my budget, the, the police budget isn't right, and this budget isn't right. So I, you know, take it, go, I'll put anybody you want on there, do your thing, but when you tell me that you want $4,000 back for wages that were transferred, that got back in there, you're gonna give us a 30, a $3,000 amount of money for the economic development director when the 840 was passed, knowing, if you read the preamble of the 840 state statute, it says, knowing that small towns cannot afford the cost of an economic development director and all of the things that go with it, we will allow you to have a state sales tax. Now, all these years later, you said, no, we're only gonna put 3,000 towards that wage. Do you know what you're doing to the operating fund by putting her wage, all of the, I ask you to pay more of her wage, and we would pay, and we would pay the memberships.
Right.
They're over 3,000.
That's right, but you asked for that, and we...
Because, do you remember why?
Because you can use it for setting the tax rate every year, and up the taxes for citizens proactively.
For 5 cents.
Yeah.
Per whatever, 100. It, it, and we can't go over that amount that's on that air local, so we can only get what we pay. But we would, that would be a way to earmark something towards that. But in return, you know, we can't keep, you guys are saying, well, we gotta open the pool, we gotta build the pool, how much can we put towards the pool? Why can't we have another 2,000, let's up our wages, let's buy this, let's buy that, and then, oh, where are we gonna get the money?
I don't even want you to go there. Don't even go there. You bought two acres, 10 times what it was supposed to be, don't go there, don't do it, ever.
Okay.
Ever, as long as I'm on the board.
You know what?
Ever.
Don't you threaten me.
Don't go there, then we can't come up with money.
I can talk about that if I want to.
Like, we were like...
My belief, my belief on the acreage that I bought, was that it was cheaper to have an entrance to that than it was going through the ditch, which was the proposed. I had everybody on board, but I paid the down payment, and then, two people changed. So I wasn't alone on that.
No, but don't sit there and talk to me.
Hey, don't yell at me, just say, no, no, I haven't...
I yelled at you, yeah.
Mr. Murphy, I have a right to talk, you can't shut me out.
So why? But don't go talk to me about how we're gonna...
I can talk about anything I want to.
Yeah, so can I, so can I, so can I.
You got the last word.
Thank you.
I want the last word to be for the people in moving forward with economic development, that's the bottom line.
And I'm working on that, Bob, I'm working very hard to think about how I can get that group to sit down with me and say, we would like to do these projects, and...
I'm sorry, you have not asked any of us to sit down with me.
Aaron, I've asked you dozens of times to come in and talk to me.
I have gone in and talked to you, Cheryl.
Yeah, you have, didn't say you haven't.
I don't even know who to go through to get some of the reimbursement mileage anymore, I don't know, I don't know what I'm supposed to do.
Well, you guys don't work it out, you said you'd take 500 dollars, and that's all you'd ask for.
If you would recommend seats to the council, who are...
No, you said that all you would ask for is 500 dollars, so if you've reached that 500, then you're done.
But I have sent that out.
Well, then, go back, then, then get it approved by your committee, and, and, by the economic development.
We don't have a committee, we don't have a committee at this time. We finally got our $4,000 back, and we spent all last year.
Irma, are you on the committee?
No, I'm not, but I'm speaking with my husband, because he cannot stand to come to these meetings anymore. He had a stroke in August, and I have to leave, that you totally degraded him, and he can't stand it anymore.
How many people have...
That was not, that was never an intention, and you know it.
Aaron, how many people have volunteered to be on these committees?
Um, three or four, and I know all that I can imagine.
And they're all ready, they're all ready to go. They're all ready to go. I think rule that we remove the volunteer.
You don't even know they are, James, you can't do that.
I sure can.
You don't get to do that.
We sent it to all the councils.
You don't have that privilege.
We got it.
Okay, do we want a community garden this year?
Yes.
I don't know.
We can, I don't know if we need approval or not, but we can put it right where we were last year, that was approved last year. Does the board want to approve a community garden? What the, the purpose is to get a plot of ground out, they pay, do we want to raise the rates, we paid 25 dollars last year for that plot? And we don't charge, that kind of charge pays for the water.
I'm not the police, but it is my, in my backyard, and I'll, I'll just make note of the times where the water was, ran all night long. So I, I mean, it's not my place to say, or whatever, but the water ran all night long. So, and I know it makes some water, and potatoes, they need a lot of water, water ran all night long, and I don't know how you, I mean, maybe the 25 dollars is a, just turn it on, leave it on from April till October, I don't know what that 25 dollars entails, but, you know, I don't know, somebody just forgot multiple times to shut it off, or...
Was it every night, or do you think it was maybe...
No, it was not every night, no.
Okay, so maybe, maybe more...
Four times, whatever, I don't know, somebody just forgot to shut it off, or maybe signed a, a kid that go shut it off, and they didn't do that, I don't know what happened, but it was on.
And we could say, we would like for it not to run overnight.
Yeah.
And we'd raise the rate a little bit, if you want. One of the things that happened was that some of it was damaged with spray, so we would leave that up to the individual garden plot people, that they would contact me. I think Arlene, you made the remark that if they, you know, if they just tell you when they're gonna spray, you can cover, she's got no problem with that. And she, that's up to them, they can contact, like, the school, or whoever might spray.
That's the school, right, the school would have done it.
So I think, you wanted a community, you wanted like, a place for...
Who is that?
I think it's amazing, I guess, really don't have a fire, and...
Shall we try it another year, see how it goes?
Who is gonna till the, the people that rent these spots, you're gonna till their own?
Last year, we tilled some, but then it, when it got passed, then they got their own.
How many people used it?
Four.
Two.
But there was three... But there was three paid for. The three paid for, but two used it. And most things take a while for people to catch on and know it's there.
And we had water pools, and we didn't even use the hydrant, and so it turned everywhere, and the guy's tricking it all day.
My point is, is it hurting anything, if people want it?
Was it well-maintained last year?
Yep.
Depends on how much it got sprayed.
Then how maintained it?
It was pretty tough.
Yeah, they shriveled up.
Yeah, they took care of them. I mean, there was no problem.
We will talk to the spray people.
Right there, exactly. No, it wasn't, no. It was taken care of, it was managed.
Does it even cost us anything?
Not a whole lot. I mean, when you think about it, it costs us $5 or $4 a gallon.
Can you own the property?
Yeah.
That would ensure that you can own the property.
It's just right there on the end.
Yeah, right behind your gate.
I think it's there, yeah.
I have no problem.
I don't think the city should be tilling up the gardens for people. I don't wanna see that. The people that draft up gardens, they gotta kill their own gardens.
No problem with that.
Yankin has those, and they have... They kill their own gardens, they turn on their own soil.
I have no problem with that.
We tilled three little plots, or two little plots last year, just to try to help get it going, so...
Well, we had problems with the tractor, too.
Well, not from that.
Well, I taught you in the beginning.
Okay.
We have to hold on this, we have to approve this?
I would like the board to approve the community garden, yes. I would do a fast forward motion.
I'll approve it. I don't see any negative toward it. I don't... Well, we can discuss about the killing part of it, but I don't see any negative towards it. I mean, do you have negative towards it?
Are we getting enough to cover the water? Somebody waters all the time.
How can we...
Do we get enough to cover the auditorium?
Do we get enough to water, you know, people water? They use more than...
$25? We charge $25 per share leader, come in twice a week, and do her exercise class, and she charges other people to come in and take them, making money off us. Do we take it away from her? We are to serve the community, aren't we? Do we make anything out of the park? Do we charge for the water out of the park? Do we charge for the...
Can we have... Can we talk to the police officers drive by? Just make sure the water's up and they... You know, I...
Arlene Ochekah.
Yeah.
Arlene Ochekah.
That's no issue, that's no issue.
Pat.
Also, the whole thing with the water. I like, if my girls wanted a community garden, they got sprayed, water, and it all died. They watered it. We never got anything off of it, which, I mean, whatever, Arlene's suggestion, if we could just know when to cover it, what to solve that. I will admit, the water got left on twice, but I love it. If you guys want $50 for me...
No, no, I'm not...
And all the water, I'm invited to do that.
No!
I'm just being honest with you, you know? I'm just being honest with you.
If Arlene will watch it, I'm fine with that.
It got forgotten.
Yeah.
It just happened.
And maybe somebody hadn't watered for a week and thought that'd soak it up.
If Arlene watches it, I'm fine with it. I just...
If I see it for the day...
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, Bob, will you make a motion to continue the community garden?
As long as it doesn't bring one more mosquito.
I'll second the motion that Jen made for the garden. Just go, give it a go.
Okay. Bob second. Isla?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Larry?
No.
Softball mowing.
We skip one, can we go back?
What?
The changing of the evening.
Oh, the changes of evening. And I know that you're thinking of Wednesday night. Was that so that you could get here, or easier?
No, I mean, the finances.
Finance, and they would get to us, and...
So, it doesn't...
We're always gonna have trouble, whatever date we pick up, because, you know, you're gonna be close or not so close. We can make... I can say this, I can make... We can make an effort. We've got... Kind of done different things with the books, and after we met with Eddie, he set up some different reports. And once we meet with the auditors and get some other okays, I think we can probably get those reports for you, even if it is on the first. So if you want, it would be on the day before.
What's that?
We're still a month behind you. If we have the second Wednesday, that month will be done.
What I just said was, if we can get your reports to the month before. You can't get them into the month you're in. So if you...
We can get the month that we're disfinishing, but you can give your reports to us?
Yes.
It's hard, though. This will, we have two meetings around the first in a row.
I know.
So that would be highly improbable.
But that's gotta be a Monday, so, you know, we got the weekend, and you got Friday. There's no more business on the weekend. See what I'm saying? There's no more business on the weekend.
So then, it would be...
So the business would have ended...
Technically closed by then?
The business would be basically closed by Thursday, because we're not open on Friday, and the weekend, there's no business. It's not about counting days here. What I just told you was that with the improvement of the reports and those things, that we can give it a try. I am asking that you stay away from the Wednesday night meetings because of the church activities. And so...
What's the second Monday? What is...
That's a school board meeting, and they've always shied away from that. If you want to do it then, I don't care, but... It's just like two, you know, two community things that you want people to attend. So you want a Tuesday night?
Huh?
Second Tuesday?
You go.
I can't hold him, I gotta go.
Thursday?
Sorry.
You go Tuesday, and Thursday?
Nope, just Tuesdays. They don't let me play twice a week.
Thursday's bad.
Thursday's fun.
Seems to be. Thursdays have so many things, especially through the year with sports and stuff. That's... I don't know, you know? It's not about the council members as much as it is making it available to the public, I think. That should be the rule, I suppose, as far as... Take it up till next month, and go from there.
We gotta get it going. I'll hit you. What's wrong with the Thursday night?
Thursday night?
Wednesday ain't gonna work for nobody. Wednesday ain't gonna work for nobody.
Planning to go on Thursday nights.
What was that, Mike?
Planning to go on Thursday nights doesn't mean it's every Thursday.
But is it every Thursday?
So the main thing is to get the reports in time.
Exactly.
That's the main reason to move in the day to get the reports.
And I just made my offer, so it's not getting through this thing.
And you're gonna try to get it...
I just, I asked Eddie to go through and revamp the... So we know exactly what reports you want.
To be paid for one more month's fee.
And we got to go through and try one more.
But no, that's gonna be this... We're not gonna get them. We won't get them ahead of time. We'll only get them when we get here. So usually, there's no chance to look at it.
Gotcha.
Yeah, but you would have to know by the day.
We have more...
That's a good point, though, because if they close on Thursday, there's no way you'd have them early.
Right, and then, you know, if we're talking about the best...
Because we send... It takes us third, a good share of Thursday, putting all the package together.
Right. And then we'd be here using their valuable time going through...
Change Thursday. Change it to Thursday if you want.
Thursday is why not, Nate? Thursday is... We can try it.
And all of those things came in. That's why we always ran them one month late, because of all those things that have been discussed before.
So that's the second Thursday, or the first Thursday?
What about, and no Tuesday, right? No Tuesday, no Wednesday. What if somebody golfs on Thursday? Then what do we do?
There are no council members golfing on Thursday. There are no council members playing on Tuesday.
I think at seven o'clock would be easier.
Could load it here half the night long?
Seven o'clock?
If we shot for the first Thursday, would we have it up by then? And how do we have it on Monday?
Well, if, um... If, let's see, if the first, we'll go through all the possibilities. So the first... If you have it on Thursday, then you have to decide. With the Monday, we try to get to pack it up Thursday. That gives you Thursday, basically, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
It would have to be the first...
And all day Monday, so you'd have three days.
So Thursday couldn't be the first.
So Thursday would...
It'd have to be the first whole week, Thursday. Otherwise, it could...
You're gonna have a problem with the first, any day.
Because if the first ends up being on Thursday, three months...
Which April 1st wasn't on Thursday. It would have been first whole week.
So what about...
July 1st is on Thursday.
What's that, Mike?
July 1st is on Thursday.
So that has to be the second Thursday, or the first whole week. Thursday. However you want, magically stipulate that.
What's wrong with the third Monday?
I have a problem. You have a problem with the third Monday?
It gets away from your Tuesday. It gets away...
And we have everything ready for us.
Eleven months.
We have our month that we just got done, so we get on.
You're also paying bills, though.
Yep, can approve bills, Senator.
Well, could. You're estimating them now. Paying them three days later ain't gonna hurt anybody's feelings.
Actually, paying bills would be better on the third Monday.
Consider that, too. Can you get them paid on time?
See, that wasn't mine. Sorry. I gave you my phone to call.
You wouldn't have to estimate it.
So look at the third...
Which is generally bad. It ties up money for nothing.
Usually, they're getting money time for us to look at a third Monday.
I think so.
Third Monday, seven o'clock.
That would make the deal list would be fifteen times that long.
Yeah. Third Monday.
I... See, what happens now is that we have to push our people to get their bills to us by the first, or we can't pay them.
True.
So they would have plenty of time to get their bills to us, and they're usually not due for thirty days. So if they sent their bills out on the first, that's actually perfect. And the ones that we pay, prepaid, pre-approved, we don't have change that we can. It's your electric, and your taxes, and your sales tax. You can't yet pay them. So you can pre-approve those anyway.
One bookkeeping, a month will be a little bit different for that first transition.
Yes.
But after that, it'll be...
Yes. Yes. And what we did before, I just wrote a little note and put it into all the vendor things, and said, get your bills in by the first. And we can just, you know, let them know that we're fine now, that we're changing our meeting date. Whether it changes their billing or not, doesn't matter. But that might be really good, actually. The other thing that happens is, you always have this large amount of accounts payable, and Eddie was talking with us about that, because the process had always been that when the bill came in, or an invoice came in, they put it in the computer, and that always showed the accounts payable. Well, because we can't have accounts payable, we're a cash basis. So that basically goes against the rules of cash accounting. So if we get those bills, then we just write a check, and you have nothing in account, and it accounts payable, which makes books better. Okay, you wanna vote on that?
Make a motion. I'll make a motion on the third Monday at 7:00 P.M.
Okay. Motion by Larry for third Monday at what?
Seven o'clock.
You wanna go that late? Okay.
Yes.
It's hard pressed to get there.
Sure.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Second by James. And we'll go with Mr. Larry.
Yes.
Isla?
I may have some conflict, so it might be possible they won't have it a lot, but...
It's fine, we all have it.
I'll say okay.
Okay. And Bob?
Yes.
And James?
Yes.
And very last thing is that softball mowing. And what this is about is the infield of the softball field. Laura Morrison?
Morrison.
That's what I called her. Says she loves to mow, and the family has a big mower, and she would like to donate her time to mow. Uh, we, caressed her in that, if there's a lot of rain, sometimes that's three times a week down there. Uh, she said she's up to it. And, um, I said, do you want to let us know if it's too much for you, and she said yes. I, um, asked her if it would be okay with her, if she, if we okay for her to sign slips at one of the gas stations, and she just get her gas there, and we would pay off expenses on that. And if she needs blade sharpening or anything, we can do that. Does that sound all right?
Sounds great.
Okay, so I'd like a motion to approve that, so we can move forward.
I'll approve that.
Okay, James has a motion to approve.
I'll second.
And Bob second. And we'll start with Isla.
Yes.
And Bob?
Yes.
And James? And Larry?
Yes. Can we have the...
I think we're done.
The ordinance that we just, we approved before, you know, it has to have these three magical readings?
Yes.
But if three fourths of the council approves it by state ordinance, we can go ahead and do it and make it next month.
Say that again.
If three fourths of the council approves the ordinance, we don't have to wait, we can have the three readings.
You can, you, you have to, your, the, the ordinance says you're supposed to read it three times by title.
Unless three fourths of the council, or those trustees vote to suspend that requirement.
Right. On three meetings.
Yeah, we wanna suspend that, don't we, I, I ask it, you tell me.
We always do, Bob.
Okay.
We've never ever done them three meetings, okay? Is that what your question?
Yeah, so I don't wanna have to wait three months to put it in the ordinance.
We just have to make the motion to suspend it, but it needs to be read by title. And that's okay.
Does, does the city have a city attorney currently?
Uh, Mr. Stevens, I think.
Is he gonna come?
He doesn't want to be on call, I, I mean, he doesn't want to attend all meetings.
Is he gonna prepare ordinances and get things, because you don't, you don't actually have an ordinance to approve in front of you, so you can't...
He didn't say we're gonna approve an ordinance, did you?
He wants to waive the other two readings, you don't even have one yet.
What are you approving?
A written ordinance to change the meeting date, would you need to have it?
Oh, gotcha.
To approve it, to, I mean, he can do those things.
No, the motion tonight is to approve the changing, we will have to have the ordinance written and approve that.
So you won't do that until June or so then?
No, he'll do it.
No, no, I mean, you won't be able to, to move your meeting until June.
Right.
I guess you could theoretically move it anyway, but if it's your regular meeting...
We can reschedule it, yeah.
Could.
Yeah. And, and, and the other thing is, we need an ordinance for the setting of the wages, so we can do all those at once. See, the pool wages, et cetera, I believe that we need a ordinance.
They're gonna be getting into some pretty big contracts here with JEO and pool and engineering firms and...
And, and...
I'm all for saving money.
Mr. Stevens is in the legislature, so he is about available more, I believe. Um, was what I understood, that he'd be home now before long.
Fourteen, I said, April fourteenth.
Pardon?
Twenty, April fourteenth or fifteenth?
Somewhere in there. I, I want to encourage everybody to come with open minds to that school and encourage the city to come. Because I think that we have a good explanation. Um, Brooke said that he'd heard Miller's do a presentation and they did a very good job.
We did for our model project.
And we were, we were very impressed when we met with them here, so... And way back when, when we hired Kirk and Michael, Miller presented there, they were one of the three originals. That's one of the reasons we got hold of them. So, um, and that night, I was ready to vote for them, but then we kinda looked at that, cheaper to rebuild kinda thing, and that didn't get anywhere, so... I would entertain a motion with a chair.
We haven't talked about the finances, and we haven't talked about it all at the last meeting. We haven't even approved it. I done some research on some stuff, and I asked Arlene to send me the September thirtieth of two thousand nineteen. And it looks like the Farmers Emergent Bank, we had six hundred eleven thousand, three hundred and eighty-two, eighty-eight back. September twentieth, thirty, September thirtieth of nineteen, uh, twenty twenty, we're down to, uh, three thousand, like, yeah, three hundred fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred thirty-nine dollars. That's a loss of a quarter million dollars. But where, where'd it go? I mean, we spent, I'm, I'm looking at this, and this is a lot of money at nineteen, and on twenty, we're down two hundred fifty thousand dollars. And then, on, fit, on November second, at our meeting, which these two members wanted here, Isla, I, Arlene, and Don May, we got a balance sheet from you. And we had on the lost fund, economic development had eleven thousand, five hundred sixty-nine dollars and forty-nine cents. Infrastructure had thirty-seven thousand, six ninety-two, and the swimming pool had sixteen thousand, one twenty-nine. So I just got a, a sheet on my email from Arlene or you. And it shows that on September thirtieth of two thousand twenty, it's twenty-seven thousand dollars, twenty-seven, four, four eighty-sixty-four, economic development. Infrastructure was fifty-six, nine thirty-nine, fifty-seven, and swimming pool was seventeen thousand, six seventy-two, even. Now, on Sept- September thirtieth of twenty twenty, there's two different sheets here, they got two different numbers on it, why is that?
Don't know.
I got them both from you. This, this was set, this was sent from you at our meeting in November twenty. This is what I got on my email from you. It was twenty-seven thousand, four, they can't read this, my printer. Twenty-seven, four eighty-sixty-four, fifty-six, nine thirty-nine, and seventeen sixty-four, on the same date as that. In our sewer and water, they stayed the same.
Okay, um, this, this was given to you at a meeting in...
November.
November.
With the whole package of stuff.
Right, which was the, which was the September books as, as of then.
And this was the September twenty, thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
And then, we started, we were closing out the books, we met with Eddie, Eddie made his entries. I believe that this is probably the one that we sent you that was sent to the auditors. All of the adjustments were made.
We didn't, I didn't see an adjustment sheet to show how much was there.
Yeah, we haven't copied that, but we can, it's by yee long. I kinda, we talked about that actually, well, we talked about that actually today, and I said, if the auditors are coming Monday, because they have the power to change things also. And a lot of the stuff that they changed last year after we printed that, see, they, they do a lot of the figuring and depreciation and this and this and this. So then, once they make that entry, then that changes the appearance of the books also.
But our books on February twenty, days of twenty twenty-one, our numbers...
They won't be anywhere close to those, because that year's closed out.
Are, are the books closed?
The books are closed out for twenty twenty.
From, from October to...
Till now.
Till now, are they closed?
No. We don't put, we don't change, we don't mix the two years, is that what you're saying?
No, is part books closed, are they closing part books, are we gonna wait thirteen months to be closed part books?
We, we have, I want to wait till after the adjusting, auditors are here, because I want them to approve the movement of the files. And then we'll start closing.
Are you gonna go until each month, then, right?
Yep, then we'll close them, and then we'll give, give you copies back. They, I, I need, I, I need to say that when Eddie was here, he started out and he said, um, well, he, he said this several times with, I don't know where we're going with this now. When he finished, he sat there and said, I didn't expect this. And then he said, this is better than I expected, and then he said, I didn't mean that, and then he, whatever, several reports, several comments, which I don't even remember what they were. But at the end, he said, Cheryl, I'm trying to give you a compliment, say something. And I said, thank you. I don't have, we changed a lot of books. I don't know how I can explain that, but we did not change figures. We changed accounts in the sense that we needed to put numbers on those accounts that we knew where they landed. If you look at the next, I'm not sure if the one she sent today, um, but if you, but if not, stop at any time you want to. But if you look, here's what happened. I said to Eddie, can you set the operating fund up, the general fund up? Because everything was in operating. All right, as for years, from the time I set it up, operating employees were the only two accounts in there. Then all of those others went into the parks and rec and all that, that's where the lost funds were. The lost funds were not even named. We have now separated them, named them out, put them in expense and income, so you can follow through. There were two economic developments. One was in special projects, which was set up like the CBDG and all of those. They looked like they were special funds, but then you had the economic development that came out of lost, so they were back and forth. In effect, that second one, the one that was in the special projects, was not special, it was not restricted funds, and yet it was being treated as restricted. So we put that back over in, we put that back over into the general fund, so that it would be expensed where it should be, it pays, is paid out of the general funds. General funds come from your county taxes, et cetera.
How did this work? We got these from October nineteenth to September twenty twenty, and this goes from October twenty, through, this ain't even, we're not even into here. We're not even into January of twenty twenty-one.
What, ah? We're past it. Yeah. That's okay.
No, that, that report, excuse me, that report was what came to my mind, it was the Montana Republican Bureau and the report. That restricted fund, it wasn't for last year, it was for beginning of this fiscal year, up to January, probably this year. So I would like that to be stated, but the restricted fund is not in that area, it's not that, it's supposedly just...
Okay. That we sent out to the council a week ago?
Well, it was here tonight, it's not in there. I mean, it's got the wrong dates on it, it's just as obvious as a mistake, it's not...
What was here tonight was what was copied for act, into this fiscal year, right?
Yeah.
What was, what was given to the council after Eddie went through the books and sent them to the, we gave them what was sent to the auditor, so they'd know what went...
Isn't that the same thing that was in the package tonight?
I don't think so. Unless it was, unless you had a copy of the original packet.
I said the closing of the end of the year was in the package.
Okay, it's in, it's here to... It would read, it would read from October first of nineteen through...
September.
September thirtieth of twenty, would be what we sent to the auditor. After the adjustment.
Is that what you guys got? Is the packet, I thought it was a big packet here, what we sent the auditor was the same. And it's a restricted fund, even though...
We break, instead of doing a report twenty miles long, Eddie broke these up into, and they always were, to a certain extent, but there is a lost fund, it says profit and loss by fund. And that name needs to change, because it's by fund, but it's only the lost fund. Then there's a profit and loss by general fund, and there's more counts in there now, because we put the baseball, softball, swimming pool, all of the general funds, because we're no longer funding those with lost funds. When I said to Eddie, can we take, have an automatic with the closing of the books, can we have an automatic disbursement of the operating fund into these general funds, so that they don't show an hole? Because there's nothing allocated, for example, i- into, um, when the, when the money comes in from the county, it goes into that operating fund, and there's nothing goes into the police fund. So we have to have a way to pay the police. So in the past, it was automatically came from somewhere, I never could tell where. But I, I said, let's pay this out of the general fund, because that's what it's supposed to do. He agreed, and then he laughed and said, but that's what you always had a problem with, was the lost, was that other transferring of funds automatically, and I said, but that was lost funds, and was restricted, was going to non-restricted, and he said, yes, I know that, that was wrong. So, um, so I think that, my feeling is that when the auditors get done, I think that we should have a meeting that is nothing but financials, that you, we can sit down and say, how to read these reports and what happens with those transfers back and forth. And if you need Eddie to come out and do that, he said he would do that, too. But he's hard, he's a little hard to understand sometimes, you know, because he knows it so well, that he goes so fast.
Has the auditors been working on it?
No, well, they've got everything, we mailed, they've got the whole ledger, they've got all of this, they've got all the banks, they, they, they've got it, you know, everything they've asked for.
They have any, no idea when it's gonna be done?
Well, if they spend two days out here next week, it'll be, probably be done by the end of the week, because they've been through everything that we've sent.
Supposed to be done by April first, is that correct?
March thirtieth.
March thirtieth.
And they had, they had it in their office, when I talked to them, they said, we know we're not gonna get it done. The, the penalties for not, and I don't know how they count that, I don't know if we have to have it to them by then, but they have to have it finished by then. But at any rate, I read the state thing, said, said if it's not done on time, that they can withhold state payments, but then they'll be released to citizens filed. So, the, and I, you know, I think it's so close that they're not even probably, I, I don't know that. But, but they didn't seem to be sure, particularly, in fact, they would want to set the dates. Because we had, we had everything sent before they told us to, you know. What they did last year was they came in and they said, I wanna see, um, name of your, the big ten is the payroll, because that's what it's about, and that's what we've been working on for three years. So, we wanna see so-and-so's payroll for the month of June, we wanna see a, we wanna see bill for the Black Hills for the month of February, we wanna see, and they just pick, and you never know what they want.
And they're, they're looking for a physical hard copy of these things, or...
Oh, absolutely, you gotta have to, you gotta have the statements. So even if we get billed online, we gotta copy them off and file them. And we have a certain debt, the thing, we can't destroy them for X amount of years, too. It's just like you say, okay, so let's say that you said, well, this isn't right. So we could say, okay, let's go shred that, no, we can't, because we presented it to you. So we have to say that that was in that packet, so all of that's in that, in that folder.
Adjourn.
I want a, a motion to adjourn.
We haven't finished the economic balance, Cheryl, we're...
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk to you on the outside, we're not holding anything longer tonight. You come in and save me, do whatever you wanna do. Yeah, I know you want. So...
I gotta, I'll go over with Cheryl, we'll figure it out, we'll get it done.
I want a adjournment, please.
I'll make a motion to make an adjourn.
Second. We can't beat a dead horse any longer.
I'll second.
Second by Larry. Bob?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Larry?
Yep.
Isla?
Yeah.